It's it's 10. I gotta move my microphone closer. There we go. It's 10. Everybody wanna, oop, where's my cellphone? Yep, I don't wanna be the one having to buy donuts next time. Everybody mute your phone if you would. Mr. Swenson, can you hear us?
I could hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Gary.
Thank you.
Hang on just a second. So time being 10 o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Patty, roll call, please.
Dan.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Gary.
Here, here.
Sherry.
Here. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
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 I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes proposed for the agenda?
Madam Chair, for upgrade of the wifi, we don't have any quote yet available. If you want, I can just mention the reason why we need it, or we can just delete it.
Why don't you go ahead and mention the reason why? So we'll just leave that on there. That's fine. I would entertain a motion to approve agenda as proposed.
Don't move.
Second. Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, a second by Clemish, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. At this time, would anyone care to make a public comment?
I would, Sherry. I'd like to have one.
All right, go ahead, sir. You are the only one.
Okay, I got a picture here of an individual. Can you, can you see that?
There's the player.
Oh, there we go. That's a picture of Malcolm X. He was a civil rights leader back in the sixties and seventies with Martin Luther King. And he was murdered shortly after he made this famous quote. And the quote is, "The media, the most powerful entity on earth, they have the power to make the innocent guilty, to make the guilty innocent. And that's powers because they control the minds of the masses. The press is so powerful in its image-making role, it can make the criminal look like he's the victim, and make the victim look like he's the criminal. If you aren't careful, the newspapers will have you hating the people who are being oppressed, and loving the people that hate you." It's a quote from Malcolm X. So that's the only thing that I have, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Would anyone else care to make a public comment? Public comment is now closed. Item number five, property and liability insurance. Go ahead, yeah, turn your microphone on there. Thank you.
Okay, well, Don and I were tasked with this monumental task, really, to look at and evaluate our insurance. And Don, you feel free to chime in anytime here, but, you know, Don and I sat down with both parties. And afterwards, we had a fairly lengthy discussion, and we just, we came to the conclusion it's impossible to do, you know, an apples-to-apples insurance quote where you compare everything line by line. And the reason for that is I think they're both really good insurances, but this, they're structured differently. And it is my opinion and Commissioner Kettering's opinion that the coverage is essentially the same. We would be having the, you know, this, the same plan. Either plan will adequately cover the county. And once everything is compared, the costs are very similar. They're not the same. But we didn't figure the cost savings was a significant factor. At least to me, and I believe with Don too, the deciding factor for us was all of the benefits that go with the Public Assistance Alliance, such as the loss control prevention, the safety training practices, the employment practices hotline. Additionally, looking at it, 57 of the 66 counties are a member, and over 400 municipalities. Cybersecurity options. I think that, at least it's my feeling, and I believe Don's as well, that those benefits with the Public Assurance Alliance warrant us changing to that.
I just, it was a difficult decision. We actually met with each party a couple times, either on the phone or in person. And it was very difficult, especially when you get down to deductibles and limits of insurance. Well, limits of insurance is fairly easy, but they combine different insurance types and different categories. So it makes it very difficult to do one-on-one, but the pricing did not seem to be a huge factor, as Dan said. And so with the services provided by both parties were felt to be very good. Roger Smith's insurance company, we've had great experiences with them. But some of the other factors seemed, when you weighed costs and everything, when you got to the other factors, it seemed to indicate that probably it'd be to our advantage as a county to move.
I think the real decision that we have to make today is what level coverage do we need? As, as Don mentioned, currently, we have $6 million coverage, which places us right at the top, at either number one or two. Most other counties are at 1 million, or a lot of them are at 3 million. It was Don and I's opinion to split the difference and go with a 3 million option, but we're certainly open to the rest of the commission's feelings on that. You know, Minnehaha, the biggest county, probably with the most liabilities, has 1 million coverage, and we have six.
I've got a question for Dan.
Yes, go ahead.
You said 57 of our 66 counties have this, this new insurance that you want to switch to. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if it's new. I think it's been around since the eighties, but yeah. The vast majority of counties and municipalities in the state have this insurance.
That would, that would maybe be to an advantage, say that something happens on the county line with a, you know, just a scenario, two county trucks from two different counties and somebody else, and it would make it a little bit easier, maybe. So I guess I'd have to concur with both you and Don to make the change.
You're the coverage, you're talking the general liability.
Yes. Right now.
Separate from law enforcement and auto and.
Well, we have options there. Right now, we have 1 million dollar coverage and then a 5 million dollar umbrella. And we can decide at each level what we want. And this is why it's so hard to compare the Public Assurance Alliance. If we wanted 6 million dollar coverage, they could write us a policy to do that. And it would be more expensive from going to 1, 1 million to 3 million is about $20,000. And going from three to sixes, and then additional 10 to 15 on to that. So the, the majority of liability comes with the first million dollars worth of coverage, and then it's less expensive the higher you go than, than that. We could per se have 1 million dollars of general liability and 6 million of law enforcement. We could do that. That's an option we have. Most, most other counties, even counties who have jails, don't do that, though. So we're kind of at the upper end.
Dan, that's, Gary was gonna check on two or three things for us through Smith Insurance. Let's have Gary respond on that.
The ambulance and the emergency management are in different policy.
Yeah. And see, that's, that's one of the things Don and I identified, where there's actually a pretty possibility for a significant savings is because if, if we switched, every one of the county operations would be under one policy. Because we have one policy now for, for this, and then we have another policy, I believe, for the jail, and another one for emergency management, and another one for the ambulance. So we have three or four policies that are an additional cost to this. And it, it would seem to streamline things if it was all under one policy. But I don't know. Do you have any information on that you'd care to share, or I hate to ambush shit like this, but.
Brian, could you step up? Because then, then the public can hear. Otherwise, they won't.
I'll have to turn the mic on.
That way? Does that work? All right. I'm not positive what the pool's providing. I think I would look very closely at the limits of liability that you have and what you're suggesting I'm going to. You know, I, I don't have the state numbers in front of me, but having that umbrella policy that not only goes over your liability, but also your law enforcement, the autos. You know, you're gonna have to go to 6 million on all of those to match, you know, to adequately compare what you're looking at. In terms of, I'm not sure what Gary was asking. I, I was out of the office yesterday, so I didn't, I didn't get caught up on that. We can research whatever we need to and get back to you. You know, again, are you, are you looking at any retro date coverage with the pool?
Yes.
And how, and how many years?
That's either three or five, and that's something we'd have to discuss. And we asked you guys for a quote on that too, but I, you probably didn't. Yeah.
You know, obviously, our policy includes that, you know, because we've written it with the EMC since 1992. So your coverage is good back to 1992. If you go back to Gage County, you know, Roger brought it up to you guys, you know, wrongfully imprisoned eight people for 15 years. And they're sitting there raising taxes up $26 million or $30 million, whatever the, whatever the case was and awarded. So I think I would carefully consider that as an option, you know. I understand, maybe we have some higher limits. That's not a bad thing. You know, if you look at the same, the same coverage with the pool and the same limits that we have, clearly, it sounds like the, the pricing is similar, right? I mean, I haven't seen the price, so I, I don't know that. You know, those would be the things that I would look at very carefully. I don't know if the pool includes all the jail, the county, the ambulance, and things like that. So things that you have to consider.
And those were, those were some of the things that, that we wanted to get from you to see how much additional we were paying for those services.
And Agnes provided that to you? No. Okay. You know, and I can get that to you today.
And I know Roger was gone.
Yeah, he left for warmer weather. Left at the right time. So yeah, those are definitely things that we can provide for you. We do have a cyber quote that I have here on hand, you know. That's where the school had. They got hit, what, a couple of years ago? Same company. They were very appreciative of the covers that we had for them. You know, it turned out really well from my understanding. I wasn't involved in the plan prior, prior to me. So we've got a cyber quote option for you as well.
What was that quote, if you don't mind?
Here, I've got a couple copies for you. Pass them on. I'll shoot you an email or electronic correspondence as well, obviously.
I think we, we really need to make that decision today, here pretty quick, so.
You know, and you guys are bringing up loss control and the services that are provided and things like that. I can promise you, EMC, that's what they do. We can get as much help as you would like from them. It's no cost to you. The biggest thing that I would say, sometimes you ask for all of these services, and then you get a laundry list of recommendations to do. And then, you know, which is good and bad potentially. But we can get you any of the loss control services that you want and or require. That's, EMC has represented in the South Dakotas. It would, would not be hard to do.
One question we, we wanted to ask you and Roger.
Yep.
If you would be willing to be our agent if we did switch. And I guess we haven't for sure got an answer. I know that's what you guys do at the city of Yankton. Is there any interest in that, or?
I would say I would defer that question to probably Roger. I think it would be a challenge for him to take that on, but I'm, I'm not gonna say yes or no, just because it's probably outside of my realm of.
There's a possibility then.
I, I wouldn't shut the door on it.
And that's one of the things that we, is, is the service we've gotten through you guys has been so great. That's what makes this, this such a difficult decision. And I really think a best of both worlds would be if we could maintain you guys as agents in some capacity because of experience and the long working relationship that we've had with you guys and the trust that's built. You know, but I think at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for the, the tax dollars in the county. And hopefully, that can, you know, keep you guys involved in that, because it has been a good relationship, so.
Right. I think what the, my main suggestion is, if there is a switch, you gotta buy as much prior acts coverage as you think you can afford. And, you know, just based on the limited examples that are, that are out there now. What are the chances? You don't know, you know. That's why you buy the insurance, right? You know, ours will go back for as long as we've had the coverage. As soon as you leave EMC, obviously, you lose all of the prior acts coverage that's there. So, you know, back 20, 30 years, however long we've written it, I have to go back and look. And that, I mean, and following up on the limits of liability too, is, you know, making sure, obviously, the pool doesn't provide an umbrella. Well, you know, our umbrella with EMC is, you know, exactly what it means. It's an umbrella policy. Goes over all of your liability and your auto. So making sure that you've got a, you know, you've got six, you not only have a million dollar liability limit on your auto, your law enforcement, your general liability. Then you got 6 billion on top of that, making sure that that, you know, you're losing a fair amount of coverage there, you know. You guys have any, any other questions?
So at our last meeting, this quote was provided by Roger. And so does this cover the sheriff's additional policy and the ambulance additional policy? Is that all in here, or are those separate policies?
Those are separate policies.
Do you know what those are off the top of your head?
In terms of pricing wise?
Yeah.
No, I, I mean, no, I'd hate to guess. I can tell you they're worth one beacon, which we, we brokered out of Fisher Rounds. They've got the, they've got the one contract in the state, and it's, you know, again, a very good policy. In terms of pricing, I, I'll look it up, and I can, you know, if you give me an email or a phone number, I'll call or email whoever I need to.
Jim, do you know how much it is?
Okay.
So my understanding, Dan and Don, is this new proposal covers ambulance and sheriff in there.
Jail, EMC, it covers search and rescue. It covers everything. And Lynn, are you online?
Yep, I'm here.
This is Lynn. I don't know if you've been listening. Your policy, correct, Commissioner Loz had a question, covers, in addition to, you know, our offices, it covers our jail, emergency management, search and rescue, ambulance. Is that correct?
Right. So the liability falls over all of those. And then as far as specific ambulances and stuff like that, as long as we were given those specific units, then they're also included in the quote. We, we have the one liability document to provide all of the coverages. And I believe when Patty and I filled out the paperwork, originally, we included your emergency management systems and stuff like that. We've got numbers for your jail staff, so those, those are included, and then your expenditures for those, those departments are included in your budget. So then that's how we collect and rate for those types of, of entities. So, yeah, we, at this point, I have talked it over with underwriting and confirmed twice that our quote includes the jail. It includes all the sheriff's department, the EMS rescue. What we would just wanna double-check and triple-check is that we have all of your vehicles and any other specialized property that maybe is covered by those, those other policies. We would just wanna make sure that we did capture those, so that we don't have any coverage gaps that way.
You, you also cover volunteers, right, for like eating in this?
Yep, correct. The, the volunteers are, they meet the definition of a covered party, so they would be covered so long as they're acting within the scope and duties of, of those assigned by the county.
I'm not sure, do, are we covered now with volunteers?
I'd have to look at, I mean, I can't imagine that you wouldn't be, but I'll have, I mean.
Paul, Paul, yes. But in that's, do you, Paul, do you know offhand what your separate insurance policy costs? I hate to put you on the spot, but.
So adding back to Paul here, the one beacon policy, I mean, Paul, you've been around it longer than I have, but have you seen a better policy than that one? Um. Have that on top of, you know, I don't know where the pool comes in from a liability perspective. I guess that wasn't my understanding. But you had the search and rescue, you had the fire. They're, they're separate policies, which means they have separate limits of liability. 1 million dollars isn't nearly enough coverage to, to cover the whole county in terms of the emergency medical, the ambulances, the search and rescue. They've got their separate limits.
And that's really, that's our choice on what we wanna do. If we wanna have a million, if we wanna have 3 million, 6 million. That's, I guess that's our decision. And, and Don, when we compared all, you know, the difference in insurance, it's really pretty similar. There might be, you know, a thousand dollars difference between them all added up. It's not significant. If you look at the 1 million dollar coverage with EMC versus the 1 million coverage with the Alliance, it's similar. When it goes to the 6 million dollars, it's very similar. So I don't know if it's an issue of the, the price or the quality of the insurance, but that's, that's, I guess, our decision on what level of coverage that we wanna have. Counties, Brown County, Brookings County, Minnehaha, they all have search and rescue. They all have jails. I've talked to some of the commissioners from up there. They've had nothing but good things to say about this insurance. So it's, when you're covering 57 of the 66 counties, you know, they're in similar circumstances to us. So I guess that's the decision. I guess that's before us. Anything you wanted to add to that, Don? What does other counties have emergency management and search and rescues?
I guess my opinion is, and I know I don't make the decision, but I'd rather stay with Smith Insurance. They have helped us through everything in there is. They're always there for us and helps me out a lot. That's my opinion. It's not that much difference in price-wise and.
Well, I think there's a, there's a, the big value comes in being a part of the pool and utilizing the hotlines for employment practices. You know, another thing is the deductible is hugely different. And I don't, I don't know if you wanna go into detail with that or not, Don, but there is a very large difference in, difference in the deductible.
Is there a possibility of that going up when, if we go to the pool, that they have cases and lawsuits? Is that gonna go up then?
That's always a possibility with insurance. I mean, you know, the concept of the pool is the same with EMC. They write, they write many counties and many schools and many things like that. So they, they've got their own pool set in one company, just like the pool does in South Dakota. So there's not a huge difference. In terms of hotlines and loss control, I don't think we've touched base enough on EMC. I can promise you, we've got very similar, if not better, services there to provide for you. Again, be careful what you ask for from time to time. You know, we can get all of these options, and then we bring somebody up who says we're not doing this, this, and this correctly. And then they're gonna require you to make those changes. Who knows what those are gonna cost you on top of that? And I, I mean, I'll just reiterate Paul's comment on the one beacon policy. It's the best policy I've seen in terms of insurance costs and what they cover. So I, I do believe you are losing coverage without looking at the pool policy and apples-to-apples. I'd have to sit down and do that.
Lynn, are you there?
Yep.
Explain the retro coverage and, and how that works with us.
So the retro, what the retroactive coverage does is it, it's the prior acts coverage. So if you purchase the six years or three years or five years is, is what we've quoted. Basically, if there's a, a claim that is, that is made due to an incident that has occurred within those timeframes, then that coverage picks up those exposures. If it occurs outside of that timeframe, then that's, that would not be something that would be covered. So that's where the retro period, that amount of time, that's where that decision has to come in, is what you're willing to accept as far as timing for accepting, do you, do you want prior acts coverage for the three years or the five years? Those, those are the options that we've quoted.
So how much would the quote go up if you went longer than that? So for example, if you went 10 to 15 years?
Nobody will quote that for us. You get, you guys, when we talked with Roger, we didn't get a quote from them. And I think the highest they would go is five, five years.
But we wouldn't need a quote from them.
Well, they, they could provide us with retro coverage, or the pool could. We could get retro coverage from either insurance company to cover the gap.
I mean, at this point, you have EMC. You've had EMC coverage for 20 years. You not, they've not only collected the premium, they, you know, they're on the policy from a prior act perspective. But the day you move is the day you lose all prior acts coverage with EMC.
So I just wanna clarify that statement. So if we change in January 1st, we are no longer with your company. You will still represent us for current litigation.
As far as my understanding, yes.
Okay, so anything at your office today would continue with EMC insurance?
As long as the claim has been made during, during the, during the coverage period, right, you know? So.
Right.
It was July of this year.
So say we get sued today.
Right.
On something.
Correct.
Then you, you would be responsible for that claim.
EMC is on it, yep.
Okay, but if we got sued January. Okay, but if we got sued January one, for, well, let me finish. For a claim that was in December of two thousand and twenty.
Right.
Then the retro policy we purchased would cover that. So it would be up to the county to say, how far back do we want to cover our exposure? And would that be three years or five years?
Correct.
Okay, so in that case, if something happened seven years ago and, and we got sued for that, the county is responsible a hundred percent. There is no insurance coverage. Okay, I just want to make that clear. Everybody's on the same page. Okay.
There is some risk there for the county because. If we moved. The likelihood of a strong defense may be questionable.
Right.
Well, I don't know about the defense of, of, of the lawsuit, but certainly who's paying for it? Is that what you were talking about, the dollars associated with that? So the, the next question I have with that retro policy, is it a one-time payment? And we are a hundred percent covered for, say, the five years from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty? Lynn, or do we have to continue to make that payment to cover those back five years?
The retro coverage is a one-time purchase. So you pay that one time and then you've purchased the retro coverage for the five, three or five years, whichever you decide. So it's a one-time thing.
Okay, so that lump sum will forever cover those five years.
Right, because you've purchased the retro coverage, so yes.
I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Lynn, of your fifty-seven counties, how many of them have an ambulance service?
Off the top of my head, I'm not certain how many actually have the ambulance service, um, with them. We have, most of our emergency systems come with our cities. Um, because we have tons of the smaller, well, not smaller, the medium-sized cities are providing some of those services. City of Sioux Falls, for example, they contract with, um, some people, but we help manage those contracts. But we do have, um, of the top ten largest counties in South Dakota, we write eight of them. Yankton County is one that we have not yet, um, written. And then Lincoln County has, um, we were working on a quote with them this year, but we're not able to get that done in time, um, for them to make that decision. So I haven't gone back to actually research, um, because I, I wasn't prepared because I didn't know that question would be asked. Um, as far as which one of our counties do the ambulance services versus whether it's handled by a city or, um, other alternatives. But we do have other members that have ambulance services. We talk all the time about EMTs. I know Harding County, um, I believe they do their ambulance services because they talk about relationships with Potter County often. Um, so it's, it's an exposure that we're aware of, um, that our coverage document responds to. If, if our coverage document is something that you want to see, it's absolutely, we would send that along to you, um, at any time.
But you do have cities then in, in the pool that, that have ambulance services that you cover.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, it's like I said before, the biggest thing that we would want to make sure when you guys come over to the pool is that because you have different policies for, um, some of these other exposures, we just want to make sure that we've captured, um, more so the property exposure, making sure that we have all of the equipment listed and all of the vehicles listed and things like that. And, and as I, I mentioned to the commissioners before, we have worked with, um, Roger's agency before with other members. He represents, um, the city of Yankton and, and we've, we'd certainly be willing to continue that relationship because I know he does service clients very well. Um, and I know Patty does, um, she mentioned that she really appreciates the service and is very comfortable with, with Roger's team. And, and so we would be happy to continue to work with them as well.
You know, I think another area that we need to, to mention that's not involved in the numbers, but is the, the, the alliance and their work and their advice on the ever-changing laws of South Dakota. I remember when the pandemic first hit, it wasn't, we weren't getting a lot of information out of the state, but the Public Assurance Alliance had, uh, Zoom meetings where they advised the counties and the cities on how to implement your meetings in compliance with open meeting laws. That didn't come from the state, that came from these guys. I was also on a call where the alliance is really taking the lead on how the changing marijuana laws are going to affect counties and what counties and cities need to do to be in compliance with the law. That's not coming from the state, that's coming from these guys. And by rights, they could say, Yankton County, you're not a member, you're not welcome to attend these meetings, but they don't do that. And that has a value to, there's a value of being involved with the state association and the benefits that come from that. I think that's important as well.
You bet. Yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you.
One of the questions we need to ask, especially for the EMS ambulance side is, what is the liability? What are they, what do they cover for liability? What is your medical liability along with, um, are they covering our medical director? How much is that? Hardington County, I believe, is a BLS ambulance service, not an ALS ambulance service. We need, um, I don't have the, the figures right in front of me, but I, I know it's at least a three million dollar liability coverage. Along with, I think it's another three million dollar, um, medical liability, um, coverage as well. So those are, I think, questions you, you, that need to be asked before you change. One of the things to kind of remind every, the, the, about was that, um, my, my department and Paul's department, we are separate from our insurance is being covered separately by another entity. It's called One Beacon, One Beacon, which is specifically designed for fire and EMS services. And that might be one of the reasons that, um, this. This, with, with this company doesn't have a lot of emergency services because just about everybody that I know of in South Dakota is, um, with emergency services is with One Beacon. Because they give, uh, they provide, um, a lower rate and they cover a tremendous amount of things that you wouldn't even consider being covered by an insurance. So if, I, I think that we need to make sure that we, if you guys go that and go to put our department there, that our liability coverage is there so that.
What level, like three million, is that what?
It's at least a three million, but I don't, I don't have all that, that.
Do you know how much that cost, that costs? I mean, it's hard to compare when, when nobody knows how much you're even paying for your insurance. You know, I don't know, you don't know, he doesn't know.
Yeah.
I don't even know how much.
We can just find out how much Paul and I pay in insurance. Because it's, it's totally separate.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, everything is a thought.
Your policy, Paul's policy.
Oh, okay. Are you, are you representing One Beacon? Okay, so, okay. So that would be one of the things that is, right now, we're kind of, they pulled. They pulled us out of the Roger, you know, the county insurance because this was provided a lot better and less expensive insurance.
Lynn, could I ask you a question about that? Do you know if your cities and counties supplement your insurance with One Beacon?
So I'm not aware of any, um, supplementing of coverages and stuff like that. And I, it was hard to hear him because he wasn't, I don't know if he wasn't talking to the mic, and so I apologize because I didn't catch all of what he said. So I'm not aware that they supplement it. We have some limited medical malpractice coverage. So depending on what level of care you're actually providing through EMS. So our first responders are paramedics and things like that. We, we take that inside the pool. Our medical directors, um, in their administrative capacities, as long as they're not out there actually rendering care, because they're doctors, so they're held to a much higher standard than our first responders, our emergency medical, um, service, our search and rescue. So there is some limited coverage, um, there, but those are things that we look at. And if we have to supplement, we do. But at this point, I'm not aware of anybody who does that on the side. And if you want to keep them separate and with One Beacon, that's completely fine. You know, we have, we've seen that done and it, it's not a problem. It's, it's what the county is, is wanting to do and is what they're comfortable with.
So if we did follow that path and continue to have those, and I'll tell you, the ambulance was about eleven thousand, the emergency management was about fourteen thousand. So in that case, I'm trying to forecast issues with that scenario. We'd have two different insurance companies, and if we had a claim, who pays it? Kind of thing, uh, that could be one issue.
Sure, and what it, what it looks like is it just each company would have to determine who their covered parties are. And so if you continue to cover your, um, the, the emergency response, the emergency management and stuff like that through One Beacon, then we would simply issue an exclusion, which says that we don't cover these activities of these people. We've done it because some, an easier example is some of our members have fire departments, but they choose to cover those separately because they have their own separate budgets, and so they just want to do that. So we just simply exclude those, those out. So there's no question, there would be no, no duplication of coverage. Or if you wanted your coverage to run over the top of whatever policy they have, then we would just write it, an endorsement saying that it is in excess of any other coverage that is purchased. So we can make that work.
So if we went down that route, your quote today for essentially general liability and such would be maybe a little less.
Sure, because what we would do is we would go back and back out some of the autos and then we would, because we have some, some of those EMS autos for certain in the quote, and we've included them in our auto liability quote. And then we would probably be able to work with you guys and determine what of the expenditures that were reported would be attributed to that, um, that department. And we could, we could legitimately back those out as well.
Are autos covered under yours or are they covered?
The only thing that's not covered in ours, correct, is the building.
Building and work comp, okay. So that could be done.
Well, you know, it would probably make more sense to have, if we could have all the vehicles under one policy, it's certain, you know, they're going to be less expensive. You know, and if they wanted to have a specialized policy for, you know, the paramedics or something, I could live with that. But it, it sounds like a lot of the other, you know, the four hundred municipalities and the fifty-seven counties who are a part of this, you know, we're not that much different than a lot of the other counties. I know the ambulance is a, is a little different, but. You know, I guess, are you ready for a motion or?
If the commissioners feel we've discussed this enough.
I, I'd like to ask, uh, who would be the agent in that scenario? Where we, uh, maintain the beacon policy.
You represent it today.
Yeah, I mean, if you keep the one beacon policy with the fire and the search and rescue, that would, that would, it may still be us at that point, Smith Insurance.
To me, it sounds like there's some moving parts. And it's December twenty ninth.
Ninth, yeah.
So my concern in, in. I know both of you met with both parties and, and put a lot of work into this and got some information. I think that's great, and I think it's needed to happen. With some of the questions and concerns brought up and then some of the moving parts, and while we could make this change, the policy or that. My concern is when we get in a wreck on January first. Is anything spelled out? What coverage is, who's covered, who's covering what?
Lynn?
Lynn, if we get on a wreck on this January first and we switch to you guys, are we covered?
Which department is getting into the wreck? If you're keeping, so if you're, if you're keeping some of your other policies, then we just need to work through if there's other policies in place. And then we would look at, because right now, like I said, we've considered to cover all of your departments. We don't have any excluded, um, departments.
Lynn, so.
Yes.
We make a clean switch, we switch everything to you guys, we get in a wreck January first, are we covered?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion, switch to the Public Assurance Alliance. In, uh, three million dollar coverage, we're currently at six. And I'm gonna also move that we purchase a three-year retro coverage with the Public Assurance Alliance. And we leave the option for Roger Smith to be a local agent if he so chooses.
I hope you wrote that down.
So, um, to switch to the Public Assurance Alliance at a three million dollar coverage, purchase a three-year retro coverage and have the option to keep Roger Smith as our local agent if he so chooses.
You have a premium.
So.
I don't know, do we?
From the, from the last meeting, I wrote down the three year was about fifty-five thousand and the five year was about seventy.
I feel that three year is adequate. Don, you, you have feelings?
That's what we're going to land it on.
Yeah, I, five year is seventy-four and, you know, I don't see a lot of cases from five years popping up. It, it, you know, it's always an option. They, Roger showed us a paper from something that happened twenty-eight years ago. But coverage for twenty-eight million year, or twenty-eight years ago, retro coverage would probably be millions of dollars and.
But we'd be covered under the. Yeah, anything prolonged it. There hasn't been a second that I'd have a little bit of more discussion. But we get that discussion, I'd second the motion. But I would like to discuss it a little bit more. Ryan, uh, my understanding would be you need the renewal of the policy prior to the first of the year or whatever, second or third or whatever day it is. If, if we renewed it and decided to make this change in, in sixty days, we would just be charged for the service of the two months that we used it on.
Correct, that would be my assumption as well, yes.
And we would have our full coverage in place.
Until, yeah. Ninety days to make that decision, yes.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to know. Who are the boss on, on these two? I'd like to be able to go back and do a little more work on my comparison and.
So did you second Dan's motion or did you? You did.
To bring up discussion.
To bring up discussion, okay. I just want to clarify that that was done.
So on the motion that's made. The, I'm just trying to look at this quote from last time. Does it reflect a? A million dollar liability policy and then what are the? Deductibles and all that, that all needs to be.
That, that's.
Clear, I think.
Which, which one are you looking at?
I don't, well, what I get.
What do we want, I think we.
The motion is to switch.
Right.
To a company but not to a policy.
We need to decide what level coverage do we want? Do we want one million, do we want three million, do we want six million, do we want ten million? I, I think she has to know what we want before she can quote us what it is. And so I guess let's make a decision. We want one million?
Well, you made a motion for three.
Well, I can amend my motion, you know.
So on the, on the information that was sent at eleven twenty last night, forwarded this morning, there is columns on the last that has comparison and it has a one million, a three million, and a six million. there is columns on the last that has comparison and it has a one million, a three million and a six million. And where that changes things is your general liability and your auto liability. And that's liability, so essentially the only thing changing is the liability limits on those. And the motion is for three million. Now, and I think Dan, Don brings up a good point is we're sitting here, to me, with not enough information to make a wise decision. And so it may be in our best interest to renew our current policy and to further look at this. Because we need to make sure that our highest dressed departments, which are sitting in this room today, the four of them, are all adequately covered. And we need to talk to the other cities who have ambulances and see, does this insurance from the alliance meet their needs or do they supplement? Because we can go all Roger Smith, we can go all the alliance, or we can go the alliance with the supplements through one beacon. And those are all different cost levels. And right now, we've got a quote from Smith Insurance that has six million dollars in there. And if the county thinks three million is better, I would sure like that quote to reflect three million. So we have a better comparison between the alliance and Smith Insurance. And if we can renew the policy and go a couple of months under this policy and look further at these details, I think we're making a better decision for the county.
Now, what I'll throw out is, I'm not a genius. Compare, compare apples.
To me, you are, Don.
It's, it's extremely difficult to get down and weigh what a deductible's worth or as far as the total. There are so many movable parts, as I think, Joe, you said there's a lot of movable parts. And, and I don't know that we'll clear up a lot of those smaller movable parts because there's, you'd have to be a genius to go through the insurance policies and, and do it to a total accuracy. We felt, I think Dan and I felt, coverage was probably pretty consistent between the two policies. Couple small advantage, a couple advantages. How much is thirty years of going backwards? Well, if you don't get sued, it's not worth a thing. But if you get sued, it could be worth millions of dollars. If that's beyond three years, I mean, you know, who knows? So I'm saying, I don't know that we'll come up with a clear answer, but I think we can get some more information before we make this decision.
Well, I would at least, at least like to be able to compare accurate dollars to accurate dollars. I mean, we've already added twenty-five thousand that, to the, our current policy on top of the one eighty-nine that was quoted here. You know, so to, to be able to say, when we move, we're either, this is what it's costing us or this is what it's saving us and this is the risk we have with the change.
I think we need to make some decisions then to make Don and I's life easier. What level do we want to be covered at? Do we want to purchase a retro policy and do we want to have the additional agent fee? So, because if we're gonna do one department at six million and one at one million and one at three million, it's virtually impossible for us to get you guys a quote. This is one of those things where Don and I sat in the whole time, we listened to all the pitches. And at least, at least my feeling is, is that, you know, this is the right decision to do. And, and I get it, change is hard, nobody wants to change. But I think the long-term savings to the county and the benefits outweigh the risks. And we, we could, you know, we, we brought this up last year. And, you know, we didn't make the move then, we're bringing it up this year again. You know, eventually we're gonna have to decide and that's what we have to do as a board, but.
Well, I think my, my concern is we brought it up last year, middle to end of December. This year, we bring it up in the middle to end of December. And I don't think that what, what you and Don have started to explore is throwing out the window. I just, you know, as we're talking and listening to concerns and, and looking at these things, I think there's enough concerns where we can comfortably move forward with how we are. And, and there's nothing saying that you have to make changes January one. We can make it February one, we can make it March.
Didn't, didn't Roger ask us for a decision? I, I, I thought at that meeting, he wanted to know.
Well, he needs to know if we're gonna renew this because our coverage ends twelve thirty-one.
And we don't, what we don't want to do is get that coverage canceled.
Yeah.
And that's what Roger was saying.
Right.
So, you know, then you have nothing.
Is there any cost if we go a month with you guys and then switch? Is there a cost? I mean, that's a lot of work for you guys, for us. I hate putting you guys in that position too.
Right, I mean, it'd be similar to any other policy, you can make the change, you know.
Is there any cancellation?
It would be prorated more than likely as far as I'm understanding. I've never canceled a county policy before, so I wouldn't want to say that with the hundred percent exact science, but they could potentially short rate the cancellation, which charges you basically a, a fee of some sort.
Do we know how much that is?
It's usually a percentage fee, so it would be a significant.
Ten, twenty, thirty?
I would say five to ten thousand, I, you know. Let's say you pay for January first to February twenty-eighth or whatever February date is this year, that's two months worth of coverage. You know, which is what, one-sixth, take your total premium divided by six and that's kind of approximately what you're gonna get back. Assuming that you pay in full, right?
As far as the work goes, I assume the work's already done.
The work is done. Basically, we hit the issue button, if you guys give us that and your policies will be delivered and up door. I, I think I would just make sure that you have all of your autos and all of your stuff scheduled and me personally, I would advise you not to switch what you have for sure. I mean, obviously, we don't want you to switch at all, but not to switch your ambulance, your search and rescue, because that policy is designed one hundred percent for that. And there, I've never seen a better policy from that standpoint.
I, I think having these two gentlemen come in and talk a little more of a light bulb in my head and I appreciate that along with what Patty has said about service. I don't see a problem with extending or renewing and going for two months, but put it on our calendar for the next four meetings that we have discussions.
I would also say, I think with all the questions, we should just have a special meeting and we should have Roger come in and Lynn come in and they can be here all day or if they have to be and answer every one of these questions. And we need to know exactly what we're paying for all of these policies. I mean, we got how many poli, and, and you know, when we went, sat and met with you, I guess I was under the assumption all, all of those policies, what we had. And then now we're finding out we have all these other policies with additional costs. We need to just lay it all out. And I think the best way to do that would be to have a special meeting when we're all here and we can all ask all the questions that we want. And then we can make a decision at the end of one, two, three, four, five meetings, however long it takes. And, and make a decision and then just move on.
I think when we met at Roger's office, we, he had stated that the ambulance and the emergency management are on different policies.
I think.
Wasn't on my paperwork, but I never got, I never got the cost for that.
Right now, we have a motion on the table. And that is to approve the public assurance, three million liability limit, three-year retroactive coverage and to give Roger Smith the option to represent that policy. The general consensus that we're leaning to heal that motion before I actually call for a vote and then to further discuss this.
You know, there's this lot, we keep delaying stuff and there's gonna be a lot, I know how important this is. But Don and I spent a lot of time, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this, there's gonna be a lot of other things happening in the, the new year. This is just gonna keep compounding that, but I'm fine with whatever the board chooses to do.
Are you looking for a second on that motion?
No, no, Commissioner, we have a motion and a second, so we are good with that. And unless there's further discussion, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote.
You know, and it just, the fact that the vast, vast, vast majority of counties and cities in the state are involved in this. This isn't some new startup organization nobody's ever heard about. The biggest counties in the state of South Dakota, the biggest cities are all members of this. I've spoken with commissioners from Brown County and Minnehaha County about this and they all have high praise. I mean, this is a insurance col, policy that's built to serve counties and cities just like us. So I'm comfortable moving.
Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Likely to support the motion, but will not, I would want additional information. So I'm gonna vote no, because I want to see the.
Jerry?
I'll vote yes.
Joe?
No.
Jerry?
No. So that motion has failed. And I would entertain another motion at this time.
Well, I move that we set up, I don't know, however many special meetings you think we're gonna need for the first week of January. Both insurance companies come down with everything they need and we sit in here and we get this figured out. You know, if it takes a day to do it, then, but I, I don't feel that two commissioners should do this. I think we all, all the commissioners need to be in this room so they can get all the information from the insurance companies and make a decision.
So I think that's part of the strategy that probably shouldn't be our main motion because we need to have insurance starting January first.
Well, if we don't do anything, it just, it keeps going, right?
We need to, we need to approve.
I'm fine with, how, how long, how long do we want to do that for then? And we don't, we, we're not sure of the cost if we go with you and then cancel in two months, ten thousand, thirty thousand.
I mean, if you take your total cost and divide it by twelve, that's your monthly premium, right? And if you, it'd just be prorated for the most part after that, I can follow up with EMC and let you know if there's a fee associated with not going the full year, which I'll do, but I don't have that answer off that.
But if, when we make this decision, you know, if there is a fee, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand, maybe we can't switch it. I mean, then everything else is a moot point, is what, what I'm getting at.
I think the work is still valid and, and before we start having special meetings, I think one, two, three, four people need to address their concern before we, so we can bring that to the insurance companies and say, okay, this is, here's what we need to make sure it's addressed and, and let's get a quote that covers what we think we want.
My concern is if we find out there's a thirty, forty thousand dollar cancellation fee, then this whole thing, then it's not worth it, in my opinion.
Then it would, still would come around next year. I don't think we have enough information to move forward on, on switching.
So what, what information do you guys need?
I would like to talk to the state's attorney's office about retroactive coverage for one, that's probably the number one.
What, we have Lynn right on the line, she could tell you everything.
She doesn't know what kind of cases we may be sitting on.
If we have a case that's already filed.
Maybe sitting on.
If you have a case, right, you send it to the insurance company, is that correct? You guys don't get a file and not send it to those guys?
I, I think what Joe's getting at is the state's attorney's office may have knowledge of potential litigation five years beyond. And I think Joe's looking for their opinion on the risk associated with that. And I'm sure they're probably not prepared to talk about that today. And then I think he's probably poking at sitting down and saying, what exact color, coverage does one beacon provide? And then to get with Lynn and say, Lynn, do you cover this? Are we good moving forward? And to maybe talk to compadres in other counties, other ambulance services and say, do you have South Dakota Public Alliance? Are you happy with them or do you need supplemental coverage for little things that the alliance does not cover? I think that's what Joe's point is with these four resources sitting here. And we haven't even, we don't even have a dollar amount for the additional sheriff coverage on here as well. So you've got a column on this side, you've got a column on this side and you add up all the totals. And that's really where the comparison is, ensuring you have proper coverage across your county.
Well, and, and one of the things connected to that, I think, Sherri, is that I believe, I believe I heard Paul say they had to move convention, another conventional company to the beacon process because they were having.
Issues.
Issues.
Correct.
So that, I guess, is what rang a bell in, in my head saying, hey, we need a little more information relative to that, maybe from other counties.
Well, I, I'm gonna insist then that we get all the documentation from you guys, a complete portfolio of every bit of insurance that we have from the county, from you guys, for every single department. Because we don't have that now. And we're gonna require that to do an accurate repair. You know, we need to know what all the deductibles are. You know, all of our coverage is for all departments.
I think we'd be more, I mean, we'll be more than happy to provide that for you. I would argue with you that I think you have it.
I don't have, I don't have.
I mean, you have it in your different departments is what I would say. I mean, we've delivered all the policies.
When Don and I met, that wasn't provided.
Right.
And so now we're, that, that's what I'm saying, we need all the declarations, all of that, so.
Yep, not a problem.
So at this time, we, we need a motion to renew our current policy. And our intent is to meet sometime in January and decide if we need to switch. And what the cost of doing that would be.
Yeah, just to reiterate, like Don sent, Dan is, just because we're not, you know, might not switch today. I, I'm not saying we, it's not worth exploring, it's just, I just don't.
Do, do we have any idea though that, that there is potentially a fee, that we don't know what that is? I mean, if we.
I would say there is potentially a fee, but I, you know, a homeowner's policy does not get short rated. A commercial county policy, we have never canceled with EMC, so I'm not going, I've never explored the option. So I will tell you, I'll call the underwriter when I get back to the office and let you know.
Thank you.
So I'd move that we renew our insurance coverage with MT and RC Smith as presented at the the Jan, December fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting.
Do I have a second?
I wasn't there yet, but I'd like to qualifier on that make our final decision by the first March.
I had, I'm just wondering, as a, as a motion, what happens if we don't make that decision?
Here, here's, here's the, some of the issues that I saw in doing. We've through this process in the last two weeks of December. Down here yesterday, had several commitments that she had to make, provided all the time we needed to ask all the questions. But it's an incredibly busy time, Roger is gone. Ryan, you, you were gone for a day or two. We, we need some time, but we have to force ourselves to make the decision. That's why I'm saying sixty days at the most.
I agree, we gotta force ourselves, but I am hesitant to tie that into the.
Into the motion?
Into the motion, the approval of the. That decision isn't made, or there's more information needed than what happens on March first, we just don't have insurance?
No. Here's, here's, that's our decision.
Not if it's part of the motion, is my concern, I guess.
All we're doing is, the motion is renewing the policy.
Yep. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, as long as the motion is to renew the policy, and then close the motion, but then I think we need to, super in March first is fine with me. Target, let's have it done.
We have a motion by Healy to approve the December fifteenth quote from MT and RC Insurance. Are you good seconding that motion? So I have a second by Kettering, and as part of the discussion, the intent is to revisit this more fully and to make a final decision if we are going to switch by March first. Further discussion?
Sherry, this is Gary. I'm gonna have to abstain from your vote, because I won't be here next year, so I don't feel like I'm qualified to vote on this.
Well, Gary, the, the motion is simply to approve the insurance tonight. Part of the discussion was our intent to revisit that, so you're more than welcome to vote on this motion if you care to.
No, I think I just better abstain, because like I said, I will be here next year, so this looks like this is gonna drag on for, for quite some time, maybe another year, and kick, kick the can down the road for another year, so I, I prefer not to vote on this.
Sounds good, Gary. Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. So the motion passes, we have renewed our insurance beginning January first with MTRC, and we will revisit this before March first.
Let's schedule some special, some special meetings, so they can get their stuff ready, and Lynn can get their stuff ready. And let's do it, try to do that in January, if possible.
Yep, and we have Article Five meetings to schedule in January as well.
Insurance too, so, and I think really this has gotta take priority, because if we have a deadline of, you know, March, you know, this is something that needs to happen, you know, pretty quick, while it's all fresh in our minds. So I think we should schedule some meetings right away in January, if possible, where we could just all come in and get everything presented, and then that gives them time to work on the information they need. And it gives the other insurance company time to do it. I mean, we need to commit to this, or like, like Joe said, March first is gonna come up, and we'll have accomplished, not accomplished our goal.
I'm, I guess, Dan, I'm, I guess, not sure how much information that we need from Lynn. With the information she sent yesterday, and I guess I can't think of items that we would want them to submit prior to an open discussion with them, as you suggested.
Yeah.
We want Smith Insurance to get us a couple, a couple, three items of information, and I think we could do our, our conversation in a couple of weeks or less.
Yeah, I guess, I think it would be a good thing to just do it in a special meeting where all the commissioners, I mean, you and I asked every question that we thought, and there's twenty other questions we didn't think of, and it's tough, and I understand it, and it's important.
Even thought of.
Exactly, and that's why such a monumentous decision, we should all just be here as a board and ask all the questions, and at the end of it, we decide. And we vote one way or another, and it's done.
Unfortunately, my opinion is, is that we both, we have two very credible insurance carriers that are providing us with information and great coverage.
It's a tough decision.
So.
And say, when the information comes in and.
So, I will follow up with the four departments who I think are affected by it, ask them to investigate through their contacts across the state to essentially check out this association. And January first, we're reorganizing, and we have a new commissioner, so to set any dates today, I think is a little preemptive. And we have a meeting next Tuesday. So.
We have that on the meeting for next Tuesday.
So next Tuesday, we will schedule a special meeting time to talk about that. Moving on to item number six, contingency transfers.
I think you've gotten.
Thank you.
The transfers, contingency transfers, I think you have all have copies of them?
Yes.
Not a lot, I mean, it was fairly.
Are there any questions about these? Patty, you said the printed versions were a smidgen different than the packet.
Yeah, there is a couple of changes, because there were some bills this time.
If there are, go ahead.
I'd move approval of the contingency transfers.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the contingent, contingency transfers, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Assigned CRF dollars, and these are the CARES Act dollars that the county has received year to date. Yep. So for the public's benefit, the county was allocated one million, five hundred, seven thousand and eighty-eight dollars for CARES Act funds. So these funds were spent on salaries for a few of our departments, sheriff, jail, part of the ambulance, the nurse, and which other salaries?
Emergency management.
Yep, no, not emergency management, because we have a separate contract for them. Those.
The nurse, sheriff, jail, and ambulance.
What percent did they end up paying on ambulance?
Forty percent?
Sixty.
Sixty percent.
That was originally, I remember.
It was originally forty.
They changed it to sixty, good. So year to date, we have been reimbursed one million, eight hundred, fifty-six thousand, one hundred, thirty-two dollars and three cents, which is actually almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we were allocated. And the only reason we're able to do that is several counties and cities did not use all their allocation. So the state has chosen to roll those dollars over to counties that have over-applied, if you will. And we're one of the counties that has, so we are benefiting from that. So the list you have, now Patty still has claims we're approving today, which we got radios for the sheriff's office we're approving today, and then we'll have some salaries from December to approve, to send in as well. So we'll, we'll boost that, that allocation. So just for the public's benefit there, our county is on a good end of receiving a lot of dollars. So now we have to assign these dollars.
Correct.
They're sitting in the general fund right now.
There any restrictions on assigning these? Well, I'd like to see, you know, I don't have a specific number in mind, but I'd like to see some placed in James River Bridge account, particularly for the Stone Church Bridge replacement.
Do you know how much is in, how much is allocated so far in that account?
Um, was it?
We, we put in two hundred and fifty thousand last year, and there was a hundred thousand, so we're probably at three hundred and fifty thousand. I believe a twenty percent, you know, eighty, twenty split is in the neighborhood of a little under seven hundred thousand. I'm not saying we have to get exactly there, but we all committed to replacing that bridge, and I, I would like to see that, those dollars allocated sitting there, you know, at least a big portion, you know. If we do get that in bridge improvement grant, then we have the dollars to follow through with it. So I'm not set on any particular dollar amount, but I'd like to see some go to that.
See, when do we find out on that?
You know, Mike.
March? April?
You know, there's also, nobody wants to do this, obviously, but there's also an option if we kick in more than twenty percent, our bridge improvement score increases significantly, does it, does it not? If we put in more than our twenty percent, our bridge, bridge improvement score goes up significantly, because I believe Brookings County did that, and they had several bridges over the Sioux River replaced. You know, it's, you don't wanna do it, but you also don't want that bridge.
But are we limited to so many dollars over, what, four years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How close are we to that?
And what I'm.
I don't think we can change that, though, that application's in, right?
It's not, not due until January first, and we already submitted, but we can add addendums to it, because the deadline was on the paper. What I'm saying, and this might make sense, is if we could, we do have a window for the bridge improvement grant. If we could hypothetically spend more money and get that bridge a year earlier, then that drops off a year sooner, too. So just something.
We had, we had talked the strategy with that bridge, is if we didn't get it this year, to go ahead and do the engineering on that, so the engineering could come out of this allocation, and that would get us our points. And it's essentially the same, it's a wash. So our, our hope was to swing first for the best deal we can get, and then to swing again.
My, my concern is where we're at with the bridge improvement score, we're, we're toward the bottom, it's, it's really a hail mary pass. I mean, in all actuality, if we're all betting people, we're not gonna get that, where we're at. But were they for a bridge this size? I mean, I mean, this is, this is not a little county bridge somewhere, this is a big, you know, the three million dollar bridge is gonna take up.
I don't know that comes into play, does it?
Well, if they have, they have fifteen million dollars allocated, this is, you know, a third of that, or twenty percent of the whole state funding.
Right.
So it's gonna play, it's gonna play a part.
Yeah, that sense does, yeah.
Yeah, so my thought is, we wanna be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, does it make sense to up that a little bit? If we get denied, we get denied, and the money doesn't go anywhere. But if we do get accepted, that bridge gets built a year sooner, and then a lot of that bridge improvement grant drops itself, drops off a year sooner as well. It's an option, not saying we have to do that, but.
I think, to me, the strategy is even if we were to get awarded it, we're gonna have a, a year of engineering, and so it's not buying us time. So if we, if we leave it as it is, and throw the hail mary and catch it, great. If we, if we don't, we put the money into the engineering, and we're still on the same timeline. Yeah.
Right.
So it's, you know, they, let's, I guess, for lack of better terms, make them force us to spend that money before we offer it up, would be my preference. Right.
Yeah. That it will get done? It will get done? Yeah.
Yep.
So, so could we, are you saying allocate some of this to engineering?
Well, hang on a second here, Patty just got where we're at right now, we've got an account, well, I shouldn't say account, we have an assignment for bridges at two fifth, two hundred and fifty thousand. We have an assignment for Flea's Bridge at a hundred thousand, so there's the three fifty. We have an assignment for road and bridge of about two hundred and ninety thousand, and Patty has indicated that's been sitting out there for a long time. So those are some of the assignments that are out there.
Is it better to consolidate those under, you know, one, or is there specific, are there specific qualifiers to using money out of those?
We can, we can move them anytime, too.
I guess we got six hundred thousand dollars that.
So, you know, so what I would suggest today is to put the two bridges together, so we have an assignment for bridges, and that essentially is earmarked for the big grant. And I think it is to behoove us to make sure we have the twenty percent match required if we do get that. And to use part of that money if we need to, to do the engineering work. I think it does behoove us to put more money in the road and bridge fund, and maybe change the name to just highway, to do special projects that come along. And opportunities with that, because we have to assign these dollars, and once we assign them, we can reassign them if things change. I think the other thing we need to consider today is we should have an assignment for further COVID response, whether it's fifty thousand or something, because COVID is not done. And when that bill was signed by the feds, they allocated nothing else for counties. So this is, this is our allocation for COVID response. So to put a little bit of money aside for specifically for that, I think is wise, because we have to assign it somewhere anyway. The other thing is, the court system is so far behind this year, they keep delaying trials, that many of the trials from twenty twenty will be in twenty twenty-one. And I'm forecasting, we're gonna need some more help. And whether that's continuing to use our retired state assistant state's attorneys or what, I do think it's wise for us to recognize that we're gonna have some additional expenses in the state's attorney's office for that. And again, we've got one point, eight-five-six million dollars we need to assign today.
Chair, Mike's on the agenda next, and I'm wondering if, before we make assignments, we, we shouldn't hear a little about the road and bridge thoughts on this, because myself, I would like to see the vast majority assignment of these funds to go to road and bridges. That's what we've been dealing with for the last five, six years, county needs.
Don, I'd like to add that, too, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'd like to find a specific project, whether, throwing out ideas, whether it's a portion of the Walston Road or something, and we commit to that project, and instead of sprinkling it all over, it'd be nice to.
Well, I think Mike could bring the five-year plan in, what's going on, the five-year plan, and make your recommendations.
See, and that's why, that's why if you just assign it to the highway, you know, then you can, you can spend it on whatever highway, whatever projects that you want. If you specify that you wanna do it on this road, you can only put it on that road. But if you put it in the highway, then you can, you know.
Right. So with that being said, I guess, what I'd probably support is if we took, say, fifty thousand to COVID, we came up with a dollar figure to the state's attorney's office, anything else that we might, you know, basically peel off the top, and the remainder, I would put into the highway budget, or road and bridge fund, or.
What, you know, Don, a year ago, we talked about capital improvement for the highway department, and you had a really good idea where we're pretty much have no plan for any equipment replacement. I think this would be an opportunity, you know, to put, you know, I'm, I'm all for that, but we also have to have some sort of equipment replacement schedule for some of that stuff, and, and maybe a small portion could go to that as well. So.
If we spend enough of it and fix all our roads, we can sell all our equipment.
Yeah.
Put our, put our heels up on the desk.
Yeah. But all those, all of these things, I think are discussions for, I hate to say for another day, but they're, they're more specific to where they're going to go within the highway department. I think, I think it's consensus that it should go, overwhelming majority should go into that fund.
I, I agree, but you know, we really, you know, I know we have two liaisons for the highway department and we have a, you know, talk about the five-year plan. But that's really the only time we have input on it. So I guess I would like, you know, to hear what Mike has to say. And, and we are, we have got federal FEMA dollars, correct? Okay. So really that, just like Don said, plays in. I'd like to see, we got these COVID dollars, FEMA dollars. Let's kind of find out where we're sitting and maybe we can tackle a bigger project with them.
Well, high on your priority list is to, to do a code on Walstown Road, isn't it? Similar to what you did on Highway fifty. Fifty, yeah.
Oh, fifty, yeah. Yeah, that turned out nice.
Good. And I, yeah, I would support, you know, a project like that.
But I don't think we're going to sit here this morning, almost afternoon and
No.
go through the specifics of what project we're going to spend the money on.
When are we going to do that then?
Well, it's my, my question. My, my point is, we develop a five-year plan. That should have our priorities in there. Now, there may be an emergency change, but that should be the general location that we're looking at spending funds.
Why don't you come up?
I don't, in the five-year plan, it, it doesn't specify any paving going on in there. I put that more towards maintenance. When I do the five-year plan, you never know what to expect if the budget's going to stay the same, up, down. So I just, I put maintenance in there and the paving is a bonus. If you guys would allocate a good chunk of money for roads, trust me, it's going to go back on the roads. We just got to figure out which road we want to put it on. I think twelve miles of Walstown would be ideal right now. And then.
We've discovered some problems, you know, with, in the bridge inspections too, you know, some of the smaller bridges.
And then with, uh, I think that's what was in the, the task force findings originally, right? And then that was pulled out as, to discuss at a later date. But wasn't that what the findings were? With, uh, on that road track, the task force and ABC Roads designation. And then we're going to put everything towards maintenance and then any additional projects Walstown was going to get. Any, any of the A roads will get improvements. Right. I think Walstown was identified in that and then it was.
Yeah.
So and the key there is to try to align them with, um, if Walstown, for example, is supposed to get a chip seal in twenty twenty-two, this money could say, well, we're not going to chip seal. We're going to go ahead and do the, what we did on Old Fifty. So Mike may not spend those dollars this year, but to plan ahead to save the chip seal and instead upgrade that chip seal.
That's just it, like right now, you know, this year we did, uh, we chip sealed Walstown Road from Old Fifty all the way to the North County line. Yeah, I, I feel it'd be foolish to overlay it next year, you know? Why not get some of our money worth out of that chip seal? Are you going to crack seal that though? We will in some spots and we're not going to get too crazy on it. I actually took Chuck from LTAP for a little ride and, uh, we kind of discussed some of that stuff. But, uh, I do feel, you know, it'd be, I should get a little time out of what we spent on it first, you know what? Like I know chips in some of them roads that we did this year. We bought time is all we did. You know? We do need to do some major improvements on some of them. Yeah. Yeah, my point would just be, don't go crazy, crack sealing if we're. Well, right, we're not going to. Apply the overlay, you know, I mean. Right. But.
I, I, I would make a motion that we allocate fifty thousand dollars to COVID. Fifty thousand dollars to the legal staff. And the remainder go to the highway budget with the expectation that we would receive a priority list for Michael in the next thirty days on how that money would be, he would project them to allocate.
Hang on a second there, Don. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask if you would entertain a slight change to that. So it'd be fifty to the one zero. So instead of that, um, instead of putting all of it just to highway, I would ask that six hundred and fifty thousand go to bridges. And the balance, which is one million, one hundred, six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, go to highway. Just to split it up a little bit, it's still, it's still all going to, um, essentially our highway department. But that would put a million dollars in that bridge fund at the end, because we already have three fifty there.
And that, that, that's it.
Yeah.
So, so essentially you've got fifty to COVID response, fifty thousand to state's attorney courts. Uh, six hundred and fifty thousand to bridges. And if I did my math right, highway would get one million, one hundred, six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and three cents. Now there's already a, a fund there that has almost three hundred thousand in it, so.
I'll, I'll second that motion. And then for further discussion, agree with everything. Had another thought. I know at one point we discussed setting up a small fund so that we could kind of aid some of these townships out. Would anybody be opposed to put in fifty thousand dollars in, in a fund? So when these townships have these big projects, you know, it's this one-time deal. But I, I, I think this should be the trickle down. Townships are struggling, they're having a hard time with their infrastructure too. And, and there are certain circumstances where the county could maybe help them out a little bit. I think that's maybe a sign of goodwill.
I think a lot of the townships tax themselves less than what the county does on their secondary roads.
That, that may be the case, but they're, you know, suggest your goodwill. And we have done it before. We helped Mayfield out. We've helped some of the organized townships just to.
Long-term, I'd support maybe a program like that, but I would set some thresholds of them taxing themselves before they can come ask for money. So.
And those dollars can come out of that, almost one and a half million in highway we are going to allocate. And I do agree with Joe, we do need to have some kind of a procedure for that, because in the past it has been highly unfair. So I have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion.
Yeah, and as far as further discussion, I, I hope we have a, have a discussion on, on, as a commission on where the dollars for the highway are going to be spent. I know we did the five-year plan, but that's about as far as it gets and.
Sherry, can you hear me?
Want to get chips?
Hang on.
The year, and yet it had an overlay, which I don't have a problem with that. I think that was a good call. But that should be called by the commission.
Gary, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say that if you're going to vote on it, uh, for the same reason as before with the insurance, I'm going to abstain from voting on this again.
All right, Gary. Uh, since this is allocating a pretty good amount of dollars, we'll go ahead and do a roll call on this one.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. So motion passes four zero. Now, one thing we do need to do is that Fleegs, Fleegs Bridge allocation. We need to just move that into general bridges and just have one bridges.
Can we call it James River Bridges or, or something of that? Because, you know, we, we might not all be here for ten years. And so I think it's important to have a fund designated specifically for the James River Bridge. We don't know if we're going to lose a smaller bridge and then the funding will come out of there. I, I think it's important, I, I'm not saying call it Fleegs Bridge, but at James River Bridge. And then that could be used for Stone Church, could be used for Fleegs or, or anything like that. That's kind of how I, I feel, because those are big, big ticket items and we've got to put some money.
So with that, if whoever makes the motion to move the hundred thousand in Fleegs Bridge to, uh, the bridge fund to be renamed James River Bridges. Is that, would that work?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
We still have three hundred thousand in a road and bridge, right?
And that's where we're putting that million dollars. That's going into, it's called road and bridge.
We don't have to do it today, but I, I would, just like you, you guys said earlier, Sherry, is we, we need to have that twenty percent match ready to go. So we're not scrambling.
And so with, with this change, we'll have a million dollars in a fund called James River Bridges.
Yes.
So there was a motion made and a second. So a motion by Clemish, second by Healy to move the hundred thousand dollar assignment from Fleegs Bridge into the bridge fund to be renamed James River Bridges.
Discussion?
Yes.
I, I'd support that. And, and my thought process on this is there is no guarantee we're going to have for the bridges. You know, we're, if we're naming one as a, as a separate deal, it.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Well.
We may not be able to afford two bridges.
Well, we almost lost Jamesville last year and, and you know, the problems we've had with Johnson Bridge. We, we don't know which one's next to build, so.
So if we do get that big grant, seven hundred thousand of that's going with it. So it's, it's a start. And we do need to refurbish the other ones at minimum, even if we don't replace them. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
I'm, I'm just going to abstain. I'm just going to abstain.
All right. Thank you, Gary. So motion passes four zero. So that's the sign. We now have claims. Any questions on the claims?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering to approve the claims as presented. Further discussion?
Yeah, I had a question on the piece of equipment we bought from Turner County. What is that? Do you get a good deal on it? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Gotcha. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Budgeted cash transfers.
That's just the one to the emergency management for a hundred and thirty.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy to approve the budgeted cash transfer as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. All right, Mike, FEMA update.
Just giving a little update on FEMA dollars. There's a lot of.
How much are we getting?
Well, there's a lot of, lot to it to get it coming at us. We have one group of townships submitted. Three more groups to go, but, uh, our PDMG has been working with other counties and slowly been tricking on us in. Well, he must've got a couple of other counties done, so now he's working on us pretty hard. But anyways, when it's all said and done, so just rough, rough numbers, as long as they would approve everything, uh, we're looking at close to, uh, one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars from FEMA.
Have we received any of that? We have received some of it.
Roughly, uh, roughly, I think a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand so far. We got reimbursed for our, uh, the Jim River flood on, uh, our, some of our county gravels and then also the debris removal from our spring floods, so. I guess with that, I'm going to sound greedy now. Was hoping, my, my main reason for this was, uh, with these FEMA dollars coming at us from last year's flooding with FEMA dollars, ER dollars. I guess I was hoping we could have that, uh, put in that road and bridge fund also for a big project.
When it's received.
Right. The, the money that we have already received, that went into the general, right? And we cannot get that back, so into the highway fund.
So when you put your, your projections of projects that we just discussed, you could add, if this funds come in, these would be the next priorities.
All right.
Are you asking the FEMA ones to go into bridges though?
No, the road.
Gotcha. I thought you said for big projects.
Well, I'm a larger.
Okay. Say, geez, you just got a million bucks.
That was five minutes ago.
Yeah. No, I think that makes sense.
Are we able to, we're able to put this FEMA dollars where we choose? Is there any restrictions on it? Is anybody aware of?
That's, I believe that's all you guys on where that would go.
I know the last motion, we put a lot of this into bridges and hot roads. But maybe a, a portion of this should go into, you know, long-term sustainability of equipment. And I don't know what that amount is, but some amount maybe should go into capital. Capital equipment expense. And I mean, I'm sure you've got some trucks and some equipment that's getting toward the end of its life.
That's for sure, yes.
So, um, you know, because if we don't do that, something's going to break down and we're going to have a fifty, sixty, seventy thousand bill. At least this way we're planning for that.
Well, it's just like, uh, last week, we had a pickup with a sander and a plow on it. I'm running it and yeah, dead inside the road, so. And we had a blowout on another maintainer, so.
Tires aren't cheap.
So yeah, it was
How old was that?
About two and a half hours before I got rescued.
How old was it?
The pickup's a ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
Yeah.
You're nicer to your employees.
Well, we haven't.
Come get you sooner.
Eighty-seven Chevy also. But some, some of that stuff, uh, you know, like with our pickups, just to touch on equipment, like, like pickups. What we have, we might as well run it until it's dead.
Yeah.
Because it's always going to go to an auction, it's going to become, become someone's farm pickup, so we might as well kill it.
So Patty is going, she's going to check with the state auditor to see if we can even assign FEMA dollars. She's a little unsure on that. But I do believe when those dollars come in, um, we can, as my opinion, they go into the general fund. So if Mike comes to us with an equipment plan and says, you know what? We just received five hundred thousand from FEMA. I'd like to buy a new road grader or whatever. I certainly think we can entertain that. But today, I don't think we can give you a solid answer if we can assign them or not, because Patty needs to check the state on that.
I, uh, I guess I would like to see, that's, that's a great idea, have something. Some put away for, for some equipment, but then I would still push, I'd rather, yes, we need equipment. I still plan on replacing equipment, but I still want to.
Fix roads too. You know, and it goes back to when I worked for the school system, so many of their funds were highly restricted. They could only spend it on this or that, and they struggled with that. That damper on flexibility, if you. That damper on flexibility, if you will. And I think we all recognize, there's three things you need, and that's good equipment, we need good roads, we need good bridges. And to balance those three is your job, and you know it, and we've talked about that.
I was gonna make the comment, if we can assign it, I would, I would just assign it to the highway department with the, you know, expectation that maybe we do, you know, Mike worked on starting a capital fund.
I think that's a motion we'd have to make for his, would it not to start a?
Well, for him to spend any of the dollars we've assigned is over and above his budget, so he has to ask approval for that. Because we have to transfer that money into his budget. So for you to spend any of the dollars we talked about today, you have to come and say, hey, we need to supplement my budget with this, and this is what it's for. And at that time, the commission says yea or nay. So absolutely, but all those FEMA dollars are dollars that we did not spend before because we gutted his budget. And, and all those projects didn't get done. So my opinion is, again, every penny should go to roads and bridges that we possibly can. It's just legally, how do we do it?
I think discussions, Mike and I had that, we just, you know, when there's a cash in the fund, sometimes it slips away. And we didn't want to see that happen. We wanted to see it go to roads and bridges.
Yep.
Capital improvements. If Patty wants a new motorcycle, then she's gotta buy it out of her own budget.
That was the biggest thing, yeah. It's money that we spent out of our department for the flood. I'd like to see it come back to us.
Yes.
Did you rebuild the gravel pile and all that stuff?
No, this coming year, I plan on.
Okay. You know, and that's, we had, what, four-year supply of gravel that we ate up in one year, so we're really still behind on.
We're still sitting okay. We're probably sitting, I'm guessing, around that twenty to twenty-five thousand ton. Yeah, we, we get another disaster, we could kill that in no time, so.
It might be wise to, you know, replenish it or.
Yeah, because that alone, if we, if we would put up a pile at the same price as what we paid for last year, we're looking at four hundred thousand. Along with that, also the ER dollars, I assume is the same way. Roughly, we have should be close to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars is what we're looking at getting back. And the ER dollars, them are the federally aided highways, federally funded roads. FEMA doesn't pay for them, this has to go through the state, so that's why there's two different deals there. Then the other one was, like, the big money that comes in, what?
You are getting greedy, actually.
I'm getting really greedy here.
You might as well ask.
Like, the big money that comes in, is that something that we could put into the bridge fund or a bridge fund? Because just this, what, back early, beginning part of the month, we got a check for a hundred and eighty thousand for the preservation grants. I only had budgeted twenty percent of that in my budget, so I, I, yeah. I didn't, last year when I did the budget for this year, I wasn't thinking right. Like, the preservation grants, small rehab projects, the county has to pay for all that upfront, and then I have to submit to the state to get reimbursed for that. I guess just a little something for you guys to think about. I know it seems like I'm getting really greedy here, but.
No, that should go back into your budget.
Now, this year, when you did your budget, you did.
The full amount.
The full amount. Yep, so essentially where Mike's got caught was, say, the project was a two hundred thousand dollar budget, and we were only responsible for fifty thousand. So he budgeted the fifty thousand into his budget. But he had to pay for the two hundred thousand out of his budget, and so he wouldn't go over. That hundred and fifty thousand should have been spent on something else.
Right.
So what he's asking for is for twenty twenty, that, those dollars to be reallocated to him because you could have done more.
They can't be now, right, Patty? That's, we couldn't put that back in.
That.
That's in the general now.
You know, that's, yeah.
Yep, so, but going forward, you've addressed the challenge you had this year.
Yeah.
So this year, we might have to say, sorry.
Yeah.
Lesson learned, but we just gave you two million, so it's kind of, kind of there.
And you know, that FEMA money, like, we've only got a portion of it in.
Right.
So we'll get more next year, so you can, you can always do that.
When those, yeah, when those checks come in, we can say, well, what do we want to do with these checks?
Because now, if you would do something today, see, that takes that out of your cash.
Right.
Yeah.
Seeing if he's, he's, you know, not, he's good on the highway revenue. But if you take a hundred and eighty thousand out, then we might have to supplement, because that can't be in the minus.
So.
I guess we should have mentioned this when we were doing the COVID dollars, but, you know, I'm all for giving the county highway department a lot of this funding, but I really maybe think we need to talk with some of the other department heads. And the reason I say that is, you know, Sheriff, Emergency Management, Ambulance, you know, it might not be a bad idea to spread some of these dollars around just a little bit. I know we already allocated the COVID dollars, but COVID's affected a lot, every department in different ways. So I'm just kind of cautious about putting everything into road, roads and bridges and getting our blinders on where, you know, maybe that should be, you know, maybe the sheriff needs a couple new vehicles or I don't know if we need a new ambulance or something along those lines before we get it all tied in. I think we should probably get some feedback on, on that. I agree, the majority of the dollars need to go to the highway department, but just maybe not every dollar. And I know this, you know, the buildings, you know, this one in particular, it's coming up on the agenda for the wifi, we're gonna have to spend, you know, a pretty good chunk to upgrade some of that stuff, and I'm sure it's similar in the other buildings as well, so. I just wanted to mention that.
So Dan, my comment towards that, I guess, is I've only been on the commission six years. But I've heard back to the late sixties, where commissioners didn't do anything to roads and bridges. And they let the money slip out of the Road and Bridge Fund or opportunities to improve roads into all kinds of projects that are really necessary. That should come out of your general. The taxpayer should be paying for that. We should be doing roads and bridges. That's what they told us they want. I know they want everything else, too.
Sure.
But, you know, for fifty years or sixty years, all I've heard is, well, the commissioners let the roads go to hell. Well, they did. And it's because we let, they let dollars slip out when they should have been using them on chip ceiling and various things. So I would, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I'd keep it very, very, very little that goes to other sources.
You have an entrance exam, or exam, entrance application?
Yep. Any questions on it? It's.
Campground.
Campground entrance on your boulevard, just north of the existing ones there.
Oh, fit of the concrete, are you gonna make them do?
I have it specified on the bottom of the app, if you look at that. I guess I didn't put this thickness.
Concrete, half-inch rebar.
Yeah.
Put on center.
So it'll be, yeah, six.
He knows that, right? Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the entrance application for Peterson. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
We take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Make a motion for five-minute break.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a five-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed, nay.
Second, second, second.
Would someone like to make the motion then Gary? Okay, so I've got Kettering made a motion to come back into session and Swenson seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now back in session. And we are at item number eight, which is a county health board extension. And I did go back through the minutes. And on the June fourth meeting, item number eight, we did agree to extend the county health board to the last meeting of the year. So today, we need to decide if we want to extend it further into 2021.
I think it just makes sense. I mean, we could extend it to the next meeting and get Wanda's thoughts on it. I don't see a downside.
And so we're looking at probably having COVID around certainly through the confined months of the year, which April timeframe, May. Vaccine may not get to the general public until the summer. So.
I'd say for all the reasons we started it and have extended it, none of those have changed, I guess. And I don't see changing for the next at least four months, probably, probably at least six months really, but.
How many times did they meet?
Just a, um, probably a handful. Early on, they probably met the most and then they met.
The year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any downside to it. It's, it's nice having Dr. Hill to in, to advise us. And we don't know what the situation is going to do. And, and it was, it was kind of cumbersome because we set it up. And then we had to wait some time for the state to appoint the physician and, and we needed it right when we did it. And I guess I, I would be fine with that. I'd be fine with six months, whatever.
I'd move a extension of the county health board to 123121.
Second.
Hang on, I gotta write this down for Patty. 123121, Kettering. And healing. So I have a motion to extend the county health board through 123121 by Kettering, second by Healy. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. She's gonna have a hard time reading my handwriting. All right, moving on to the next is item number nine, Mr. Hunhoff.
Thank you. I emailed each of you about the matrix as it applies to deputies in this building. I emailed each of you about the matrix as it applies to deputies in this building. And I won't, I only have five minutes, so I'm not going to repeat everything in that letter. But I would like to touch on a few details in our request that the auditor, treasurer, and registered deputies be graded seven and six instead of six and five as they were in the third draft. It was asked at the last meeting, what are other counties in the area doing? And I asked auditors in the state's 15 largest counties plus counties surrounding us to send me their wage scales and matrices to look over. And I sent you some of those variances, but our matrix was based on Brookings County. It was modeled after Brookings County. But Brookings has no deputies below grade six. So I wanted to make that point. Unique challenges of working in the auditor and treasurer offices were noted last meeting. There are unique aspects of register of deeds work as well. Our mission requires a passion for precision and accuracy in recording new documents. Along with institutional knowledge of the 150 years of land records in our vault. Takes years to be effective in the job. And like myself, my two deputies have to be bonded. We do more checking, double checking than most ROD offices. We review one another's work. We double index. We do a two-stage check on all documents submitted for recording. We converted to a computerized index, but we continue updating our bound volumes. They serve as a good backup, a hard copy backup. And some customers that come into our vault actually prefer using the big books instead of scrolling down a computer screen. We recorded 4,200 real estate documents so far in 2020, two and a half days to go. So that'll get up to about 4,400. Each of those documents goes through a 13-step process before we return the original to the submitter. And my deputies do specialize in different areas, but they're cross-trained to complete all 13 steps in the real estate process if there, if it's needed. Mallory is our leans and technology specialist. She's been with us nearly 14 years. When we start a new program, such as this year when we began electronic recording, Mallory works closely with the vendor on the training and fine tuning. She has a knack for technology. We were among the first counties in the state to offer automated indexing. Mallory custom-built the structure that synced our Yankton County records into that software. The vendor gave us a significant discount for a number of years in exchange for using her work to train new customers. She saved the county a few thousand dollars there. My other deputy, Matt Balvin, is our first line of defense in ensuring the accuracy I mentioned. He examines each mortgage, each deed, every document carefully before assigning it a book and page and a working number and a time and date stamp. And when he finds a mistake, which happens daily, he contacts to prepare so it can be corrected and our county records are accurate. Matt is quite an employee. He's healthy as a horse. He's never called in sick in nine and a half years, not one time. He's never been late to work one time in nearly 10 years. Typically, he and Mallory are both at their desk at least 10 minutes early and already working. And if you believe in rewarding people for performance as opposed to years of service, those two are the epitome of outstanding performance. And were they not so reliable and productive, I could not have eliminated the full-time clerk position we had for a number of years. That move saved the county a considerable amount, about 50,000 per year when you include benefits. Some departments are judged on the number of employees they have, or they're judged on size of their budget. And that's, those are certainly things to consider, but myself, I've always kind of looked at my office in three ways. How can we keep spending down? How can we offer new services? And how can we grow our revenue, which is tied somewhat to the new services? And since Matt and Mallory and I have been a team, some of the new services we've offered where we, you know, we were able to get all of our 150 years of records digitized. We offered the automated, automated indexing. And now this year, the electronic recording, just for three examples. And since the three of us have been a team, there is no county department whose revenue has grown by a greater percentage. And there's no county department whose spending has increased by a lesser percentage. I could go on and hear about a lot of the other tasks they do besides real estate, but it was all in the letter. I just want this county to know what important assets both of them are. I know the auditor and treasurer feel the same way about their people. Auditor, treasurer, and director of equalization and registered deeds are four links in a chain in the property tax process. That's why I kind of compare those two. There is a lot of similarities. All four offices have equal responsibility in keeping that important chain strong. And the Don asked, should all positions be paid the same? No, and they're certainly not paid the same now. The issue is, how much less will the auditor, treasurer, and register staff be paid, for example, in comparison to the DOE office? To keep our top deputies within two grade levels of the DOE deputy, we would request that they be put at six and seven. That's important because our deputies are not just in the third draft, three to four levels below the equalization deputy, but they're also eight to nine steps behind. Just wanted to give you some food for thought. I appreciate you giving me time. Thank you very much.
So we are at item number 10, which is to discuss the salary matrix. So I did get some feedback from a few commissioners, met with Dan yesterday, went over a few things. And the matrix that was handed out, the colored matrix this morning in reflects some of the requests and changes for after the discussions. The positions in red seem to be those that are causing the most conversation. So that's why they're in red. No other reason than so you can quickly compare those positions. Any comments?
I would, I would just like to say a few things. I would have to concur with Brian Hunhoff, our registered deeds. I've, I've known him since, since he was in high school. But anyway, he's been a former county commissioner. But I also want to interject on raises that are given on a percentage. You know, like you get a 3% raise, a 2% raise. It, it's not fair. If somebody's making 80,000 versus somebody driving a truck that's making 25 or 30, the gap continues to widen every time. When I worked for the pipeline for 25 years, I started in 1974. Work and shift work, there was classifications of operators, electricians, mechanics. And I was in two of those positions as, as a maintenizer and operator. I started out in 1974 at $5.73. Now, if you look back, that was a considerable amount of money back then. But you had to do some shift work, work in weekends, nights and evenings and out of town. But the first year I got a pay raise, it was $1 per hour for everybody. For the electricians, whatever their base salary was, for the maintenizers, a dollar an hour, the operators and everybody else. And it always seemed fair to me. The next year, I got a dollar an hour raise. The third year, I got a dollar an hour raise. The fourth year, the fifth year. Then they ran into a little snag and there were some changes. It went down a little bit, went back up. But on the average, it was always consistent. And that's why I stayed with them for 25 years. And I just feel that when you hand out these raises for, for a percentage, it, it makes the people, they're making 80,000, like the lawyers versus the poor guys working day to day out in the claw and snow. It's not fair. So think about that. I won't be here next year, but I want you to think about that. And I completely concur with Brian Hunhoff in his request to make things more even because a happy life, happy wife and happy employees and morale will destroy, bad morale will destroy a whole company. I saw that in the military, bad morale. One, one bad thing destroys everything. So let's keep it fair. Thank you.
Joe, did you?
I just wanted to kind of make clear what we're reviewing today is, is simply the matrix and then they call it guidelines that go along with it. And then we'll meet in the new year for the steps.
I guess. My vision, I guess, once this is approved, is then I was planning to sit down with each department head and place their employee in the matrix according to their, their current pay, their years of service and their job performance. And then figure out, so, because we have to have that done before the end of January, because that's when the first checks are cut.
Yep. And that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure, because there, in some of the reviews, employees are placed in the, in the matrix. And I think that's just the, the starting point. But I wanted to make sure that's not.
Yep, yep. Because some employees will be where they should be, some will be ahead, some will be behind.
Right.
And usually our second meeting in January is where we approve salaries for 2021.
I noticed there's a huge gap in the ambulance between the senior paramedic and ambulance director. I mean, that's, no other office has anything close to that. Did we ever research what other counties pay?
You know, I did after a meeting, Dan. I did go out and try to find information on that. And everything I found, that is within reason for folks overseeing a director position for EMS. The challenge is we don't have a lot of public data on that because many of these are private. So maybe it's run through a barra, might be run through the other hospital systems. And to call up and say, what's your pay range is not always a welcome question.
I don't know. I just, when I see a gap like that between the, the boss and, and the deputy, it just tells me that something's out of whack right there. You know, if our senior paramedic, you know, Steve retires and our senior paramedic moves up, he's moving up seven spots. It just doesn't, doesn't really add up to me. You know, I know there's going to be a jump, but that's a humongous jump there.
So that position today pays $80,000?
Well, and I, I guess the thought was, you know, this metric is to not necessarily put the person who's in that job there, but it's for the future, right? That's kind of the thought, because we're going to have some people overpaid, underpaid. I guess, you know, when I'm having an ambulance, you know, director that's paid more than the auditor and, and some of these other positions. I guess I just don't know. I know McCook is the only county ambulance and, and their person makes about half of that as the director. Granted, it's smaller, obviously, but seems like that's pretty, pretty high up there.
What would you propose?
I would say probably a 10, if it was, if it was me, or 11.
Other commissioners, thoughts on that? It's 1230, so I hate to rush the conversation, but we need to be prudent. Comments on Clemish's request to move the ambulance administrator from a 12 to either an 11 or a 10?
Seems, seems fair to me.
I'm okay with 12 myself. I think there's a, a pretty large responsibility with budgets, liability, scheduling. And if we look at, you know, the rest of the elevens, I don't want to take away from those positions at all, but you know, I, I do think the ambulance has maybe a higher stress level.
Well, okay, I, it will go along with that, but then I would think that a deputy, if that's true, then we should be having a deputy at a nine or eight or something like that. It's, you know, if your senior paramedic is a five and then the ambulance administrator is a 12, something's.
You know, I don't know how much the administration, a senior paramedic does compared to like a deputy in some of the other offices.
Well, you know, if, you know, Steve gets a, you know, something happens to him and he's not here anymore, you know, who's going to fill that role if you're not training your subordinate to fill in that position? I don't know. It just seems to me that there's a huge gap there.
But you do have to remember their schedule has scheduled in overtime. So you can add about $5,000 to each of those positions there. Because that's how we schedule it to minimize the number of paramedics we need. So it balances out and they prefer the overtime versus having another paramedic.
Is the senior paramedic a full-time?
Yes. There, yep. And the other paramedics are as well.
Is that the best? Bump them about two spots.
Is that the best for the county's sake though, is paying overtime as opposed to having another employee?
Well, we don't have to pay benefits for that other employee.
But what do they make in overtime?
I just said by about 5,000 a year. If you, if, when you look at the payroll every year that we approve and you look down at their line item, there's overtime every month and it's about $5,000 a month.
A month?
Yep. So about $60,000 a year we pay in overtime to that department.
Well, I would say, and if we hired another paramedic at 33,000 and we didn't do overtime, we'd save the county $30,000 a year.
But you have to, we have FICA taxes, we have insurance, we have retirement that goes along with that as well.
I guess, you know, habitually running overtime, overtime when it's needed, fine. But I mean, habitually having overtime is not a, you know, sustainable practice long-term.
We had that conversation too, when we talked with the ambulance this summer. Part of it is, if we were to bump everybody, if we were to cut overtime, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a staff. We couldn't hire anybody. And so then we'd have to bump everybody up and add position. You know, so I don't, to me, I think Steve weighed in on some of this and I.
He did. And when the research came in on the paramedics, we did have numbers for those. We are above the average for the area for those. And I showed you that data yesterday.
You know, I guess if we're, if we're constantly doing overtime and we lose one or two people, then that really stresses the whole rest of the system, you know, especially with COVID. If you get one crew out and you're already short-staffed, that really stresses the system. So I guess I'm not aware of any other department that operates on overtime like that.
They're unique because they're 12 hours, 24 hours a day. So ambulance, I'm going to stick, keep us focused on this. Ambulance administrator currently at a 12. Joe has said he's okay with that. Dan would like an 11 or a 10. Don, do you want to weigh in?
I believe the ambulance administrator is probably where he's at. And maybe move the senior paramedic up one or two blocks.
Thoughts on that?
That would definitely help that humongous gap.
So, so we're proposing to move the senior para from a five to a six. Any other comments on that?
My only comment is just, I know that's a huge gap. And I do think of all the departments, ambulance is the most unique. And I don't, I don't think it's as normal of a structure as the rest of them. So my only comment would be if, if how it was looked reasonable to, to Steve, I would leave senior paramedic alone. But I'm not, I'm not digging in on this.
Dan?
I guess I'm indifferent.
Don, would be you okay with leaving it at five then?
Sure.
Okay, so we will leave that one. So other concerns across the matrix. Okay, so we will leave that one. So other concerns across the matrix.
I'd like to reevaluate the veteran service office. You know, and I really think, uh, Mac should be at a six and. You know, the reason I say that is, you know, he's kind of at a clerk level now. And he does a lot more that most people don't realize that he does do, you know, he does the budget. Um, he helps out a tremendous amount of people. I mean, he, he's very good, so good that, you know. People from other counties drive quite a ways to have him help them with their claims. You know, and I think that's a great reflection on us at Yankton County and he does a lot of things above and beyond. His assignments like running the DAV van and coordinating it. That's, there's a lot more to that than most people. Realize coordinating with the, the VA for appointments for veterans. And then coordinating with those veterans to be at a time and place and then, um, coordinating. A large, a pretty good crew of drivers to drive, uh, there's, it's a lot to that that we don't see. And so I would propose him move into a six.
Other thoughts on that? I know a few years ago, his hours were increased from thirty to thirty-five.
We have a lot of, uh, younger. Veterans, um, in our community now. And Mac has done a great job reaching out to them. And I, I think that position, um, warrants a, a bump up in, in my opinion, so.
Joe or Don?
We do have a pretty, uh, large veteran community in Yankton County and certainly in, in the area, so.
I think when you look at surrounding. That position and surrounding communities where. Actually, I think in Clay County, one person does.
Yeah, and, and that's why people from Clay County and Hutchinson all come here, because the person who's. You, you know, I, I think we, we don't realize the. You know, that we have Mr. McDonald and what he does, and that's why people are. Driving out of their way to work with him. You, you know, I know, and I know a lot of other counties, that position is added to multiple other positions. But when you do that, are you getting the service that you should? I, I would think probably not.
Any other commissioners see a reason to move from five to six?
Yeah, I'd like to see it moved up, uh. I've had dealings with Mac and he's helped me out and he's gone above and beyond the call of duty and like. Like Dan said, uh, uh, new veterans from the Iraq, Afghanistan and. Some of us old guys from during the Vietnam War and, and there's guys that are from Korean War and there's even a. Few left from World War Two, and I'd just like to say that. Uh, currently about one percent of the population serves in the military as we speak. About seven percent of the total population of the United States has served in the military sometime in their life. So that leaves ninety-three percent of the population that has never done anything to secure freedom. And liberty and, uh, I'm looking up sign here that says, uh. Um, a veteran, um, the only person willing to die for your freedom. Uh, Jesus Christ died for your soul and the American soldier died for your freedom. I believe we owe a little bit more to all those who've served because the ninety-three percent of you people that didn't serve are getting a free ride. Whether you like it or not, you heard it.
Don or Joe?
I'm gonna start out with, with just, uh, a general observation. I, I thought at our last meeting that. Any of these proposed changes, suggested changes would be forward, I'm sure, uh, prior to the meeting. And if these things that we're talking about now. Were, weren't brought to Jerry, I, I'm sorry, but I, I think. We aren't doing our job. With, with that said, uh. If I look at across, uh, the level, uh, five positions. It, it does look like the veteran service officer could be, uh, a little low, but. I didn't bring it up. So I'm not gonna.
Yeah, this is recent feedback I got. You, you know, another, another. Job that we, we might not be aware of is when, you know, a veteran does pass away. Schedule and benefits and knowing which forms to fill out, uh. That's an important thing, you know, our, our World War Two vets are all but gone. A lot of our Korea vets are. Are gone and now we're starting to lose a lot of Vietnam veterans. If you look in the obituaries. There is a lot of veterans in there and that is work. For each one of those, getting them the burial benefits and their flags and what's due to their widow at a, at a. You know, at a grieving time, so I guess I would, I'd like that moved up to a six and then I'm fine.
So we've got three commissioners asking for a six and that's a majority, so that will go to a six.
Sherry, Sherry, I just, uh, I found this, uh, phrase here. I just wanna read it real quick. It says, and I quote. Only two defining forces have ever offered to die for you. Jesus Christ and the American soldier, one died for your soul, the other one died for your freedom, unquote. Thank you.
Other concerns with what is presented before you?
My final one, I guess I would like to see the, the deputies for the register deeds treasure and, and. The auditors, you know, back up to a six, kind of where we originally talked. And then, and then did the, the equalization and, and planning and zoning, they look like they were moved down. But I mean, both of those people hired for those two positions, I believe are already paid more than that. Are, are they not? And so, you know, moving them down really doesn't.
The deputy, planning and zoning is not, that's actually, um, higher than what they were hired at.
Okay, but do they have any room to? Well, you know, but back to, you know, what Mr. Hunoff said, you know, I could support raising those other three deputy. Positions to a six and, and they do do a lot, like I mentioned at the last. Meeting, especially in the auditor's office, in dealing with elections, voter registration, those are high profile. Things, you know, posting the agenda, you know, if we don't properly post the agenda on the website. It's an open meeting violation and so. You know, there's important aspects that go into that treasurer's office. They. Deal with everybody at least once a year, paying taxes or new vehicle. Most people a couple times a year and. No registered deeds, it, it's important there too, so I'd support moving that to a six. Yeah, our, our new one has the chief deputy auditor. Registered deeds and treasure at a seven and then the deputy at a five. So the deputy didn't move on those three.
So, so at this time, um, Dan is requesting that. The deputies for auditor, registered deed and treasure move up one, and he has also suggested that equalization. In planning and zoning move up one to nine.
Well, that's where they were.
And after I got feedback from other commissioners, that was where the majority of votes fell.
Yeah, I guess.
Is why it's presented here and my job was to gather feedback and present it. So Dan or Don, do you have any? Comments on what Dan is requesting? Joe or Don? There we go.
Well, one of, one of my, uh, concerns and qualified by saying. We have to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of the county. When we do that and we also have to be fair to the employees so that we gain and maintain. Good, uh, employees. But, uh, I have, uh, a, a little, uh, problem with, uh. Having, uh. Both chief deputies and deputies, cause it looks to be like that is, is just a way if somebody wants to. Reward somebody outside the matrix, uh, promoted them as you move them to a chief, uh, deputy or whatever. And, uh. I would hope that going forward, uh. There's a, a very good, strong case made, uh, by the. Department head on why they need both a chief deputy and a deputy. Now, I know there are cases where they're doing additional work, taking on additional responsibilities. And I don't say we can't consider that, but I don't think it should be automatic that everybody gets a chief deputy and a deputy. I. Sherry, I know that the, the, the foundation of this was to compare other counties and what they're paying. Uh, to, to be fair to our, our employees, I am fine with this recommendation. And if we need to make adjustments because we're losing people or because their total dissatisfaction that we need to. Uh, address, then at that time, we, we'd make a change, that's all.
Joe?
If I remember correctly, looking at. Then again, that we're kind of limited auditor, registered deeds and treasure deputies, what we're discussing now. At that level five. If I remember right. The majority of those positions that people currently hired sat towards the bottom of that step. Um, of the five. And I think likely they should. Based in, and Brian submitted some emails and, and talked in the past, but where their step should be is probably higher. And so. I guess at the, at the level five, if we were to move those positions up to a six. I think they're, it shows they're way off scale and I think they're off scale as it is today. So I guess my point is if we move them up to six. The way, I think there's work to do at the current level to get them moved up to where they need to be on those positions. So I, I mean, I'm okay with, with how it's presented today. I know it's not gonna be perfect. My thought, I guess, is if, if they, you know, get to a step twelve in those positions and have the duties of a chief deputy. Then they can be moved to the chief deputy position, is my thought. But if you look at those, that's, there's nobody below those in most of them, so it's kind of the. What you would call is the entry level position.
And, um. Maybe I'm making an assumption, uh, that shouldn't be made, but I'm assuming that, uh, if somebody, uh. Is, uh, getting paid, uh, more than their current, uh, step. Allows that their base stays the same as it is. We're not gonna reduce it, any of the existing.
There'll be no reduction.
But as replacements come in, then we would.
Right, and I think at those, my point at those positions, I think they're below where they need to be on the step already and so. To me, we should get them to the correct step.
There may be some people that in the matrix though, that they don't have a lot of room to grow where they're at is. You know.
Right.
They're not gonna advance no matter how long they're here.
Yeah, and that's. That's where you.
Corporate America.
Yeah.
If you want the job, you stay. If you don't, you leave and find a better one.
Well, and that's where I, to me, there's room. I guess I don't, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but if you have people who have been here long enough and, and have the duties. I think there's other, I think Brian outlined in other counties, they have multiple chief deputy. Right, and so let's just take your office for instance. Let's, let's say we could keep it at five and seven. And. Both of your employees get to where they're doing. Essentially our chief deputies and. You can get by without having the clerical position or whatever. I think it's still a win-win for the county. And so to me, I guess, and then if you were to hire a brand new person, then coming in at that, that five. Would probably make sense. If you needed a clerical, then that probably would be, looks like a four. So I think that the transition is, is there.
I, I get what you're saying and you're, you're saying that you could have more than one chief deputy. I guess I, my thought was, you know, for registered as deeds, for example, those are the three positions. And if you're not the registered deeds or not the chief deputy, you're the deputy. But if you're saying that deputy could be promoted to the chief deputy, then that makes sense.
Well, I don't know why you could. I mean, it's have to be warranted, obviously, the workload has to be there in the, the duties, but.
Sure.
Right.
Yep, Matt, you can speak if you'd like.
Can I make this real quick? Come on up though, this will be quick. So, and I told you Brian and, and some others, so what I do when I'm looking at this is. I try to take our current pay and our current employees out and okay, if you were gonna set this up with a blank slate. How can we, as best we can, make this work? And then we start putting our employees in where they, where they are and that's where the steps come in. And again, it's not gonna be perfect. This thing's been out of whack for some time and so it's tough. But go ahead, Matt.
All right. I think when I first started putting this together, it was very apparent that the deputies in the other offices were. Very underpaid compared to everything else. When I put this together, I used the data that I had in two thousand and six. The difference between a deputy and a deputy equalization was twenty-nine point two percent. An appraiser was twenty-nine point two percent compared to a deputy, whatever you wanna say. In two thousand and nine, it was twenty-nine point two percent. In twenty twenty, it was forty-three percent.
You're saying between the deputy?
The deputy, a ten-year deputy up in registered deeds, it was forty-three percent more. What we sent in at the nine, the seven, the six was fifteen percent. Better than it used to be before and now what you guys are proposing is seven percent. You gotta remember, and same with the, the, uh. Zoning office. When you look at the data, the zoning office, the deputy director of equalization and the deputy sheriff across counties is almost always at the same level. And I do agree with Brian and the, the. Other department heads, I mean, it's been, they've been barely more than a clerk for a long time, getting paid. I, and I don't care for myself, like I told Sherry, as if I don't want anything put in for me. On this, even though the step says I can go up, I didn't want, I wanted to try. Evening the playing field. evening the playing field out, but now we're starting to use emotions instead of data. And we're gonna be right back here where we were before. And it's gonna be a hard sell, cause I have clerk, fieldman, appraiser, appraiser in GIS and deputy. Then director. There's a lot of steps to get to a director. It's not just clerk, deputy. And then director. I mean, I, I felt like that second draft was pretty good when it came to the deputies. I know you guys got the ones that have to make sure the money is where it is. But I really think if I'm looking at the, the data, I think it's a mistake, even if, I think it's a mistake to for sure drop your deputy zoning down. Cause if you look across the state, what deputies only administrators get, and everybody knows that's not an easy job. But if, that's, I mean, that's my two cents. And you know, it did get really out of whack because every commissioner, commission that was on this since I've been here have given me a raise. Every one of them except for this one. Which I'm not complaining about, but every single one of them on their way out, they did. And that's how it got so far out of whack. And it is, it is way, I mean, I do believe the deputies and the other offices, I mean, the data shows it too, that they were very underpaid. And the only other concern I have is with some of the clerks. When they're, like, if you have a clerk that's about ready to hit their step increase, the clerks go, it's like 43% from start to like 10 years, I think. So there's huge jumps each time. So if you have a clerk right now, that's about ready to hit their step increase, and it'll only be 2% compared to like eight, nine, 10. I think that's something that will have to be looked at when you guys sit down with the department heads, cause you don't wanna.
Yep. We've identified those people. So we've discussed the, the, the three, let's see, auditor, ROD and treasurer, equalization and P and Z at eights. And there's been a request to move those to, back to nines. So essentially it would be five, seven, nine. Would be where all of the little red boxes are, if that change were made. Thoughts? Possibly equalization and planning and zoning.
You know, I'd like to say wherever we end is gonna be a huge step in trying to get this done. And it really should be evaluated two, four, five years down the road, but
Yep.
May not be here, so I can't guarantee that, but.
It should be, yes.
I do think, you know, at the end of the day, what, what we're talking about county dollars, you know, taxpayer dollars, these moves don't add up to a, a ton of money. Now over 20 years, it probably does. But that's where, I don't know. Patty, you might not be here in five years, huh? Somebody needs to be diligent about, you know, this needs, we need to pick something and move forward, and then this needs to be evaluated and tweaked, and it probably should be done every five years anyway.
Yep, along with the employee handbook and all the job descriptions.
Yeah. And you hope that there's no drastic change. You know, after this, there may be some onesie twosies, one, one grade here and there, but it, we should not be moving people or positions, I guess, drastically going forward, so.
Other thoughts on the red font?
I think what Matt was suggesting was that the deputy director of equalization and planning and zoning would go back to nines.
Yep, I, I believe so.
We would put the auditor, registered deeds, treasurer, chief deputies at seven.
Yep.
And then the five or six, I'm, I'm really indifferent. Like I said, I think they're already, I think we have work to do to get them to where they need to be, even if it's a five, but if we go to a six, you know, again, it's not a huge sum of money to the county, but I, what other people think, I guess.
Done.
Morals, something to say about morale, and there's something to be said about rewarding people for their work, but you know, again, I think at the level we've got in front of us, there's room for that to reward them already, but.
Well, I guess I've received some feedback from three of the four that we're talking about. I think majorly we're talking about auditor, registered deeds, treasurer and equalization and they have said and talked about additional duties and, and things that people have, have done to qualify them to, to be a step higher. And that's maybe why they became a deputy auditor, chief deputy auditor, is cause of duties that they were doing and performing. I can understand, I guess, a deputy, having deputies under chief deputies for the, for that reason. Dollar wise, I don't think we can tell what difference it would make in the total financial budget in, in a year from what we have. I could support either a step up for those four or leave them as they are.
Dan?
Kinda along with what Don has to say, you know, and I agree with Joe. I mean, it's important that we treat people as fair as we can. Not every position is the same, obviously, but you know, none of us, none of us fully understand the duties and responsibilities that those individuals have.
So we are looking at essentially six, seven and nine for those three levels. Everybody follow where I got that? So auditor, ROD, treasurer deputies to six, and equalization, planning and zoning to nine. Is that a general consensus?
And then we're gonna move the VSO to six?
Well, I, yep, I was just talking about the red.
Got it.
I, I keep saying dots, but it's font. Is everybody generally okay with that? And then we have the VSO move. So those are the changes to the matrix. Are we done?
I'd make a motion that we adopt the salary ma- matrix with the changes indicated.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, a second by Healy, to adopt the matrix presented with the changes being deputy director equalization from eight to nine, deputy planning and zoning from eight to nine, deputy auditor, ROD and treasurer from five to six, and VSO from five to six. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Dan, did you vote?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
And I'll vote aye. I'll oppose nay. So it does pass five to zero. So now my hope is before the second meeting in January to sit down with each, each of these departments and place every employee we have properly into the matrix. And then we'll know exactly how all the raises people are getting, et cetera. And at that second meeting, we do need to discuss inflationary raises for those not in the matrix, which would be us, part-time people, et cetera, because they are technically not in. The sheriff has a lot of part-time people, et cetera. So we do need to evaluate a cost of living raise for them. And I will also discuss with each department head, the updating of everyone's job description and to start laying the groundwork for doing evaluations. So this is by no means a done process. This is just one step. Is that, is that acceptable? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we did that. Approve new soil conservation district manager. One o'clock. Do you know who it is? And forgive me, I know I wrote her name down and I cannot remember it. So they did find someone to commit to the position. I believe she starts in January. So she will essentially be our first new employee, joining the new matrix. So, yes. Got it. Got it. Well, I will change that. Yep, good point. Okay.
Are we the ones who approve that, or, or does the, the conservation?
The conservation board interviewed and hired, but we need to approve that, that hiring. Normally, any other department, we wouldn't have to do it if it's a budgeted position, so.
Could we delegate that authority to the conservation board? I mean, they're all elected officials.
But it's our dollars. We're the ones paying the bill. So her name is Sarah Rumel. And she will be starting January 4th.
We don't know anything about her qualifications or?
They, I had talked to Bob Deedy about that, and they interviewed a few people, I think. And they felt that her qualifications with understanding QuickBooks and running an office, et cetera. And of course, they understand it's a hands-on job at times with trees, et cetera. They felt she was a really good candidate. But other than that, Don, I don't know anything about her.
Move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve Sarah Rumel as our new conservation district manager. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
I'll oppose nay. Motion carries. Upgrade wifi. Dan, did you just wanna give a, a brief need?
Sure. Don and I were on a Zoom meeting, what, a week or two ago, and the wifi is pretty terrible in the building. And Craig Miller, actually before that, discussed with me, and it's about 10 years old, needs to be upgraded. So I'll be getting quotes and presenting them in the future. I mean, it was so bad, we couldn't even hold the Zoom meeting.
What do we look at? Is it the new wireless router and?
I'm not exactly sure what we're all gonna require. The, Craig thought it would be about $10,000 to upgrade several buildings, which is, I, I think they're all similar in our building and, and other buildings. So we're just gonna look at a package deal, and when I get that information, I'll present it to the patient.
Yeah, Craig said that we, he said this probably last year even.
Yeah.
That we probably have to eventually upgrade.
Perhaps we could, you know, use that to some of the COVID dollars or something, I don't know.
Well, that, that'll go for the building fund.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty then. So you can get on the agenda whenever you're prepared to, to do that, be great. And item 13, 2021 regular commission meeting times. We have been meeting at six o'clock on our, and there's a calendar that was passed out. So that, those will be our meeting dates for 2021, the second and is it the second? Do we always meet on the second? The first and third, I was, oh, I'm looking at Monday. Wow, crap. So the blue dots are commission meeting days. So I do think it's wise to, to talk about our meeting time at six o'clock. And I know, just like today, what was scheduled as an hour meeting is now a three-hour meeting. So starting at six o'clock in the evening, oftentimes we walk out of here between 11 and midnight. And that, I, I have received some comments from folks saying they have to leave the meeting early because they had to go home and get kids in bed or, or whatever. Those were feedback. So I thought it'd be wise if we discussed, do we wanna continue at six o'clock? Or do we wanna move back to four o'clock as it was many years before that? I don't know how many years, Patty, you guys met at four o'clock?
You know, I, I really think this is something we should discuss with Wanda.
And you know, I, I.
Because, because her schedule is, we don't know what that's gonna be. And I just, I think it would not be right to switch that, and then she has a conflict. So I, I would just have this conversation at our next meeting.
And I, I did reach out to her to get some feedback on that and a couple other issues, and we were not able to connect.
One, one of the things that, that I'd like to see happen is go to an earlier time. But during that earlier time, do the operational issues. And I'd circle the ones that are operational issues on, on this agenda. Usually we have a lot more, but financial conflict of interest, public comment. Probably most of the contingency transfers and the auditor's work can be done. Approve the new soil conservation manager. And then what I'm getting at is, on these issues where there's lots of discussion, making somebody sit here for an extra two hours when we scheduled them at 6:15, or whatever. It's a waste of their time and, and we, we can do better. We can use our time better, so. That's what I'd like to see. Earlier time, and then schedule the, it's the agenda appropriately. And, and you know, I could almost told everybody that this property and liability insurance would be more than five minutes.
You know, and that's what I think, you know, we need to do. If anybody has a time, wants something, how long it's gonna take to tell us what it is to put it on the agenda?
See, something I'd like to. Something that I'd like to see, and, and for our meetings, it's almost always, not, not all the time, but usually board of adjustment is what takes along. And I don't see any reason why we can't, unless you have a legal reason, we can't say this board of adjustment hearing will last no longer than an hour. When we had Mr. Evans in here, we went around and around for four hours, you know? Nothing was said in the second hour that hadn't been said in the first or third. And I think we, we need to say, okay, we got an hour for this. If you wanna speak for, against it, nobody's opinion changed from the first hour to the fourth hour.
Well.
And if we did, if we did that, we still allow all the public input, which I'm totally fine with. But we ourselves commissioners, we set ourselves as a timeline, and I think that would help a tremendous amount.
And in, in that example, it wasn't the public's fault that discussion drug on. That was the commissioner's fault.
And if we set, you know, a time for ourselves and adhere to that.
Any other thoughts? We, we probably are not going to make a decision today. But again, as we just stated, our discussions tend to run long because we don't prepare for meetings. And so this is going to be on the meeting first thing in January. Once we seat our new commissioner, it will be. Once we seat our new commissioner, it will be one of the items to discuss going forward. So the first meeting in January will be at six o'clock. But thereafter, I do believe it's prudent to discuss, starting earlier to Don's point, to get the county's generic business done. And if we need to schedule a board of adjustment hearings at five thirty or six o'clock, so folks can attend, so be it.
The other thing I guess I'd recommend is elimination of, uh, one or the other of the public comments, and I think we should eliminate the first one. If we start earlier, then everybody that would have the, most everybody should have the ability to attend the meeting towards the later end and say exactly what they were going to say in the first one during the second one. If they want to say something on the second one that they hadn't thought of before, then they still have the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I don't think public, in my opinion, I don't think public comment with a couple of exceptions has been the problem that the meeting runs long. Usually, we, we don't have anybody who speaks or just, you know, one person, but.
Okay. So food for thought. Uh, you are, um, aware it will be on the agenda in January fifth. But this time, we will have our second public comment. Anybody care to make a public comment?
Yeah, Sherry, I'd like to have just a few words.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'm glad that you waited on the insurance. I know, uh, I was taught years ago that you need to do all your research, and, and like you said, that some of the people don't have their, there are things ready to go, and I'm glad you're waiting on that. That's why I didn't vote. I know there's a phrase from General Patton said, preparation and planning are just as important as a mission itself. Including attention to the smallest detail is one size does not fit all, and that was a quote from General Patton. But I learned from a, a man that I met during the Vietnam War, and I stayed friends with him for a long, long time. He always gave me advice. He said, uh, uh, look in the uncommon places. Look under the box, inside, outside the box. Look everywhere in, because sometimes things are in plain sight, and you actually overlook them. He, uh, he gave me lots of information. Like I said, we were friends for years, and he worked for the government. He was, he worked for the Central Intelligence Agency all his life, and, uh, and like I said, we were friends. And he told me a lot of things, uh, that I can't even say yet today because they're still classified. But the last thing he did say to me before we parted company, uh, yeah, we had to move, uh, and, and I'm going to quote this. I'm going to quote this from the CIA agent is what he said to me. Here's the quote. The CIA gives good heart attacks, Gary, unquote. And with that, thank you.
All right, thank you. So as far as commissioner updates, and we're at one fifteen already, um, the one thing I do want to mention is Valley does a great job with our website, and it is time to purge our website of a year of meetings, essentially. So twenty seventeen, she has not done it yet. But usually we'll re, in prep for twenty twenty-one, we'll remove all the twenty seventeen meeting files from the website. So the public has been notified, we are going to remove the twenty seventeen meeting files. And can we say January fifteen? So if anybody would like to go out and download any of the documents before we remove them, you have two weeks to get that done. So it's not a surprise. And if after that date you want them, contact the auditor's office, and they will gladly get you the information you request. No, um, any, anything else before the end of the year? I thought I had one.
I got a thank.
I've got just one suggestion. I, I think this has been a, a difficult year from the COVID standpoint, various other things. But I, I, I think it would be nice if, if we send a message to all the staff, uh, just thanking them for a great year. And, uh, wishing them a great twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
Second map.
I got a letter here addressed to me, but for all of us from the Need Center, thanking us for, uh, the support, so anybody wants to see it.
All right, any other comments before we adjourn? Anyone like the honor?
Motion.
Second, second motion.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned at one fifteen. Hang on a second.